Calling this meeting to order. Welcome to the closed portion of the City Council meeting on June 20, 2022. I am calling this meeting together at 5:10 PM. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to the provisions of Government Code 54953 and the recommendation of the Ventura County Health Officer issued September 21, 2021, following the social distancing recommendation and determination most recently by the City Council on June 6, 2022. The public has been informed in advance of the meeting how to submit all public comments to our city clerk, and all submissions will be read as part of the record. Can we take roll call, please?
Councilmember Gomer.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Mayor Protem Martinez. And it looks like he hasn't joined us yet, and Mayor Rollins.
Here. Madam Clerk, are there any closed session general comments, general public comments at this time?
Yes, there are some hands raised, Mr. Mayor, and if you'd like, I can go ahead and let you know when the three-minute timer is up.
Okay, so you have, do you have both written and in-person ones?
I do not have any written comments. I just see two hands raised.
Okay, so I, at this point in time, I can recognize the people with their raised hands. Am I correct?
Yes. Would you like me to start a three-minute timer for you?
Certainly. Thank you very much. So at this time, I'll hear from Brian Formenco.
Good evening, Mayor Rollins and honored councilmembers. We, the employees of the City of Portland, ask for your support at this time as our SEIU negotiation continues to work with management staff to acquire a fair and competitive salary and benefits contract. We continue to see valued coworkers leave for better-paying jobs and hear others we work with talk about how they're actively looking for other jobs in other organizations. Inflation has been affecting everyone, including ourselves. Gas alone is 65% higher. Food and energy costs have significantly increased as well. Our families are feeling the impacts, challenges. We appreciate the city's work in the completion of the class and compensation study recently provided to us, as well as their position to move everybody affected to the 50th percentile. This helps. However, with inflation historically high, it is our hopes that the cost of living adjustment component in our proposal we submitted will be addressed as well. This ask is badly, this ask is badly needed as employees are increasingly finding it difficult to keep up with this inflation. Without this, we will continue to remain non-competitive and a revolving door. When times were tough five-plus years ago, we did our part to lessen the structural deficits, which were ongoing. The ship has been rioted, and the city's financial wellness has been achieved. We stood with the city during those difficult times, and we ask now that the city stands with us. Please know, as employees, we're doing our very best. We don't mind working the overtime or even on our days off to accomplish goals set by management or to complete a scheduled task. But please know, this is just a Band-Aid, not the answer. It is our hope that in the negotiations, we can achieve a fair contract and build a great team of staff committed and proud to serve our residents with the best services possible. We have extremely knowledgeable and longtime employees who work hard for the city. The pride and ownership we have in serving our community should transcend into the employees that follow us in our footsteps. The best investment the city can make is in its staff, who proudly serve the community with pride and excellence. Our city and residents deserve no less. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Formenco. At this time, let me have Mr. Correo, Danny Correo, speak.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff. Danny Correo, Regional Director of SEIU 721. This evening, soon after we finish our comments, you'll be going into closed session to continue to discuss and review where the parties are at during these negotiations. Many of my comments are going to be either piggybacking on what Mr. Formenco said, or at least a repeat of it. One thing that we are asking you to keep in mind is the morale that needs to be, you know, kept up high. As Mr. Formenco mentioned, you know, our workers, our members, your workers, continue to come in daily during this pandemic to provide critical quality services, whether it was the water, water treatment, the roads, you name it. SEIU members and your employees were always there doing that. So please keep that in mind also, and getting to a fair contract that's fair for both sides will also give recognition to your worker bees. The worker bees, our members, your employees are the backbone of the city, continuing again to daily work through this pandemic, delivering quality services. So with that, I would ask that you continue to collaborate with us and help us reach to a decision, a tentative agreement, that recognizes the continued professionalism that's provided by these members, your employees, and also possibly having a succession plan for both recruitment and retention of the services that your employees provide. Thank you.
Thank you. I see some other faces there. Their hands aren't raised, but do they want to speak? So I guess they're just listening in. So I see a number of people here, but I gather those are the only two to speak. Mr. Formenco, your hand is up again, but...
Oh, I apologize. I didn't know that I put my hand back up again.
Okay, so at this point in time, are there any other written comments that have come in?
No other written comments have come in.
Okay. So at this time, Mr. City Attorney, could you please read the closed session items into the record?
Absolutely, Mayor Rollins. There are two items on the closed session agenda for tonight. The first one is conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. The agency-designated representatives are Brad Connors, the city manager, Charles Peretz, the deputy city manager, and myself, city attorney. The employee association at issue is Service Employees International Union Local 721. The second matter on closed session tonight is conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. The property in question is 100 Panoma Street, otherwise known as the Market Street property between Scott Street and Portlandini Road. The agency negotiators are Brad Connors, the city manager, myself, city attorney, and Steve Kinney, our consultant with Caris Navigating. The negotiating parties are the City of Portlandini and the Oxnard Harbor District, and under negotiations price and terms of payment.
Okay. So the time is now, let's see, 5:17, and the City Council will now recess to closed session.
Okay, I'm now, I'm now calling the meeting to order. Please stand up at the time of six thirty seven, please stand up for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to the provisions of government code section five four nine five three subdivision E and the recommendation of the Ventura County Health Officer issued September twenty first, two thousand twenty one, following social distancing recommendations and determination most recently by the city council on June sixth, two thousand twenty two. The public was informed in advance of the meeting how to submit all public comments to our city clerk and all submissions will be read in and part of the official meeting record. Live public participation has access through the meeting room Zoom link published on the agenda, and we highly encourage and welcome the community's participation. Those attending will have multiple opportunities throughout the meeting to provide public comments. Madam clerk, will you please take roll call?
Councilmember Gama?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Perez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Martinez?
Present.
And Mayor Rollins?
Here. Okay. It is my pleasure to give the inspiration tonight. My inspiration is to recognize all the youth of our community who have stepped up to improve our community, to the Wainimi explorers who have actively been involved in traffic control to our major community events and providing essential backpack for our homeless community, to the future leaders of America who have shared with the council the dangers of the increased use of vaping and with our teens, to the many, many youth groups who have volunteered their time to help make our beaches clean, to Jacob Marquez, a regular of our city meetings who advocates to choose California natives to help conserve water. In the future, there will be a teen council developed that will play an active leadership role to mold the future of our teen center, also developing good leadership skills. There are many more examples of our local youth taking the challenge to help improve our community. Some of them include the Sea Cadets, the Boys and Girls Club, uh, Boys and Girl Scouts, and many of our school and church service clubs. I am truly inspired and confident that our future is being left in good hands with these leaders of tomorrow. Okay. Mr. City Attorney, please provide any, um, a closed session report.
Thank you, Mayor Rollins. There was no reportable action taken in closed session tonight, and with that, I would like to hand off to Mayor Protem Martinez.
I want to mention that I had to recuse myself from the second item, negotiations of the property off Market Street because I live literally right across from the property. Thank you.
So to be clear, Mayor Protem Martinez did not participate in that discussion and was segregated to the waiting room.
Okay. We will now hear from the general public comments not pertaining to any of the items on the agenda, including those written comments received by our city clerk. Any comments for those who are participating live with us this evening? We will ask that you use Zoom's raised hand feature so that we can call on you during the appropriate comment times. This will be the same process for comments pertaining to each agenda item as well. Staff will unmute your, your mic, and you will have three minutes to provide comments. Does, do we have any public comments tonight, Madam Clerk?
I have any for in general public comments.
So we have no, um, um, do we have any written comments?
No, we do not have any written comments.
Okay.
For general public comment.
Okay. Uh, may I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
Move to approve?
Second.
Madam Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Rollins?
Yes. Okay, we will now move on to presentations. The first one is the Boys and Girls Youth of the Year Certificate of Recognition presented to Carlos Perez. Mr. Perez, did you have something to say? Or is that me for me to say?
Uh, I can, I can tee that for you and you can take it from there. I don't see Mr. Perez, I'm not sure if he has joined us, but, um, we did invite, uh, Mr. Perez to attend, uh, tonight's council meeting. He, Carlos Perez was recognized as the Boys and Girls Club Youth, Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year Award winner. He had intended to provide a speech to the city council, um, and he, uh, gave a, uh, speech at a Boys and Girls Club event a few weeks back. Um, I did see a representative from the club online with us. I don't know if he was prepared to speak on behalf of Mr. Perez. I don't know if he had a conflict and wasn't able to attend, but we do have a certificate of recognition, uh, and in the absence of a speech from Mr. Perez, I'll just read it, um, that the city has, uh, authorized a certificate of recognition and recognition of your achievements, hard work and leadership in honor of the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Oxnard and Port Wainimi Youth of the Year Award. Your contributions to the community are inspiring and leave a footprint on the city of Port Wainimi and is the city's council honored to recognize your achievement, uh, and that is in honor of Carlos Perez. So, uh, Mr. Perez, if I missed you and you are present, please turn your camera on, introduce yourself to the council.
I, I know earlier I saw a representative from the Boys and Girls Club visually.
Yeah, I did see Mr. Peak as well.
Let me, I will, I will just kind of add on to that and maybe Mr. Peak or, uh, Mr. Perez will be here. As I mentioned in my inspiration, the future success of our community lies in our youth. It is my honor to recognize one particular person who I hope will be one of our future leaders. Carlos Perez is the two thousand twenty two Port Wainimi and Oxnard Coastal Youth of the Year. At age sixteen, he has already faced many difficult hurdles that many of us much older have never experienced. He has taken a positive approach to life nonetheless, and has used this, used this to be a positive role model to our youth. He has taken his passion to, uh, passion to helping the plight of the homeless by leading a teenage drive to collect three hundred donations to this gods. He is an excellent example of what the youth of our day, the, of the, of, of what the youth of our day is and provides good direction and what they can accomplish. Part of the developing leadership skills is the ability to communicate effectively. And I know when I was of his age, I would have been petrified to speak. Heck, even in college, when I took speech one, was not my favorite class. So tonight, uh, Mr. Perez was going to speak, hopefully, um, uh, perhaps we can kind of, delay this in case he comes up a little bit later on, but, um, if I don't hear from Mr. Peak, which I saw him earlier, we will move on. Mr. Peak, are you out there? Okay, so we will now move on to number two, and that's the Destination Playground.
When I've heard, had my hand raised.
Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Gama?
Yeah, I just want to, um, congratulate the youth of our community, and, um, I'm so proud of this council and the emphasis we have made towards youth engagement. Our, our community has long, um, struggled in the youth arena, and what we have done, collectively, is really been a joy to see the results. Wainimi High School is enjoying success. Jacob Marquez is, is becoming an adult right in front of us, graduating from high school. The Sea Cadets, when we first met the Sea Cadets five years ago, these kids are now seventeen, eighteen, going on to college. I just booked an event with the, with four, three or four Sea Cadets to help me, uh, serve the, um, Southern California Naval Academy Graduate Association in Montecito, and, uh, just thrilled to see what the future is going to be. We have a vibrant junior lifeguard program, again, addressing our youth, our youth explorer program, look at the car show last two weeks ago, twenty one thousand dollars raised to support those kids. So there are so many areas where kids are being supported, and I hope we get to hear from Carlos Perez, because I have heard him speak before, he's amazing, and to any young person out there, get involved, stay involved, and help us make our community better. Thank you for being a part of our community as well.
Thank you. Uh, councilperson Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor Rollins. I just wanted to also, um, recognize Carlos Perez and congratulate him on his accomplishments. I heard him speak at the Boys and Girls Club event, uh, held just recently, and he had quite a story to tell. He'd been separated from his siblings, he had been bullied when he was younger, and then to see such a confident man deliver the message that he, he gave to everyone, um, on that breakfast, during that breakfast meeting was just incredible. I'm so proud to have him in our community, and I, I hope that, uh, he continues to the good work and, um, hope to see him on, among our leaders, our future leaders here in Port Wainimi. So congratulations, Carlos.
Councilperson Perez?
Yes, I just want to reiterate what Mr. Gama and Ms. Hernandez said. We are united, uh, with our youth and making sure that we can provide for them in the best of this community, and I'm looking forward to seeing what the Boys and Girls Club Teen Center, uh, will be able to contribute in getting the explorers involved in that and, and hoping that it makes a huge contribution to the community, and I would remind, um, any youth that are watching or any family members that have teens, to have your teenagers participate in that, in that, um, suggestion of how they want to design the teen center. It's coming up on the thirtieth, and I just congratulate everyone who is involved in that, so thank you.
Okay. We will now move on to the Destination Playground, uh, and that report will be given by Ms. Basua.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protemp. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Great. Good evening. The presentation before you tonight is the receive and file. As you are aware, staff has been diligently working with Lauterbach and Associates. We have David Casterson here tonight, um, and also Brian Brodersen with, who is a landscape architect, um, on the design of a new playground at Wainimi Beach Park, um, which we are referring to as a destination playground. Um, and in a bit, you will hear from Brian, who is the landscape archin- architect that has been kind of the, not only the vision, but he's really, really has put something really, really neat, um, together for our beach park. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it, um, to Brian, um, and he will go over what the, the Destination Playground is hopefully going to look like, and, um, Charles, if we can just go to the next slide, please. Um, Brian, I will go ahead and hand this over to you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Uh, glad to be with you all tonight. So we, uh, wanted to make sure or, or design this particular playground to be something that would be easily identifiable by everyone in the city and something kind of fun. And we came up with a concept of using, uh, or using the shape of an octopus as sort of a beginning point, and so, um, access to the beach was important, and then, of course, uh, we have a playground structure. The playground, uh, the playground, the company that makes the playground equipment provided us this, uh, PowerPoint presentation, which shows, uh, the playground structure itself, and so I'm going to sort of work from inside to outside and talk about the playground structure, the equipment first, and then we'll kind of pan out to the larger picture. So, one of the concepts with the, with the playground equipment was to have a lookout or, and, and sort of, uh, a lifeguard stand, if you will, for kids, and so the idea is that they'll be slightly elevated, uh, it's accessible, it's been designed for accessibility, and then it has several different features, as you see. We, we thought it was kind of whimsical and fun to change the material underneath and to have, uh, the dolphins for the kids to play on. Uh, next slide. This gives you just a different view of the actual playground structure. Next slide. That's the usual stuff, a lot of fun things attached. Next slide. And there's a picture from sort of the pier looking back. Next slide. And one more slide. There's a, a smaller, a, a structure for smaller children. Next slide. Uh, it includes also a swing set, that's where the project started, was to replace the swing sets that were lost, and, um, those are on the right side of the site, which you'll see in a second. Next slide. And then this is the overall site with, uh, a little bit of shading to kind of give you the, a little bit of the feel for it. The, the swing set is on your left, and the blue is, uh, sort of required, uh, accessibility paving, um, and fall zone paving that we have. And then you can see the shape of the octopus. We're in construction drawings now, and what our office is producing are the details for those tentacles on the octopus, and the tentacles will, uh, change in height from, from zero to six to twelve inches, up to eighteen inches and back down again. Our, this current view, the tentacles are drawn a little bit larger than they actually will be, so, um, they'll go from twelve inches wide, uh, to, well, to, to two feet, to three feet, and then eventually to four feet, because four feet is the width we, that's required for accessibility. So the two tentacles, one going to the place struck, the main place structure, one going to the, the, the place structure for smaller children, those two will be, uh, four feet the entire way. The others will change in width and in height and provide places for kids to gather and, and sort of an informal, uh, play opportunity. Next slide, I'm sure number, I think, yeah, so, and then this is the working, uh, the working drawing, if you will, at the, at the lower portion where the playground structure is, we're proposing, um, a stacked stone, um, wall to hold back the sand deposition, because we're anticipating that, uh, sand moving onto the play surface could be a maintenance issue for the city. So we're working with them to, um, to develop that sort of an edge, just so that the, there's some sand control there. And then to the left of the play structure, we're also proposing that those boulders sort of spread out just a little bit and become another, uh, what we call discovery or exploratory play opportunity for, for, for the kids, and also, uh, And also zero maintenance. They're just, and they would be large, fairly significant large rocks that can't be moved easily by children. Next slide. And so then the, the next, the next image will be our working drawing, I think. Is there, that's the end of that particular one. Do we have?
David, we did, we did not provide the working drawing.
Okay, well, the last, the last drawing, they, they took from ours. We've developed ours a bit further, and we have developed some details for the plan. The details that are being developed currently, that we're sorting out are the final details for the tentacles, which means we're going to have to do profiles so that they're buildable. And there's an entry feature wall that we're working on. And then also there's a curb along the main walkway that we want to do that will help to stabilize the concrete walkway, but also we want to put a little groove in it and some slope up and down so that, and we call it a marble wall. Kids can put a marble on it and roll it down and such. So that's the, the general overview. I thought that cost would be a topic of conversation, so I asked the landscape structures folks to provide an initial cost for the structure as you see it with all the accoutrement. And they said it was at two forty-three, two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars right now, the way it's shown. They predicted that the installation would be typically between thirty-five and forty percent of the cost. So that would be at around ninety thousand dollars. And then looking at the site improvement, all the paving, concrete, et cetera, there we go. That would, I'm, I'm just guessing, it would be around two hundred thousand dollars. So we're looking at a total build-out cost of, in the neighborhood of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's, that's what we know to date.
So at this, thank you for the presentation. I've, I've been waiting to see what, you know, your ideas are. At this point in time, I'm going to get, get some council comment, starting with Councilperson Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor Rollins, and thank you, David, Mr. Broderston, and Ms. Basua for the presentation and the graphics. I love the whimsical nature of the playground. It kind of reminds me a little bit of what they did in Pismo Beach, but it's, it's beautiful. I love the octopus concept and the seagulls and even the little, younger child living area. Really nice, very nice. The question I have is the accessibility path. I think you mentioned that the accessibility path, where it's ADA compliant and four feet wide, leads to the playground. I'm trying to envision how people with wheelchairs are going to interface or any other kind of mechanism they, they might need for transportation to get down to that location. If they're going to interfere with, with other activities going on, I, I would really like to see the accessibility path lead more toward the ocean rather than the playground. I, I wanted to know the thinking in that.
Can I, yeah, I can clarify.
Okay, thank you.
So on the, on the screen, we're looking at on the left side of the octopus head.
Maybe you could use your cursor to show us where.
I don't, I, I can't, but they can. Not where the swings are, but to the left of his head. There, there's a, there's a tentacle that crosses the path that goes towards the swing set.
Okay.
That's at grade, that's even with grade, so all of that's accessible. So the idea is we have an eight-foot path from the parking lot. The eight-foot path goes to the top of the octopus's head. And then you can go to the right or the left, and there, those little bubbles of pavement are picnic areas that are above the octopus, and all of those are accessible. And then there's a path that goes straight to the beach that is, you know, that, that goes down below the, the swing set that just goes right to the beach. And all of that is accessible. And then the only thing that's not accessible are the four tentacles that don't go to the play equipment. Those are the only ones that kind of go up and down. And the one that's toward the swing set is actually at grade. It's at level where, where it crosses. So that's just a color change in the pavement. That's all it is. And our construction drawings show that, but I know it's very difficult to see in this particular image because the playground company didn't really fully model what we had done. And then, yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So you can go around, so if you're, you're at the octopus, and everything in the middle of the octopus is accessible also. So it's very, there, almost the whole thing is accessible. Wherever you see something connected to another thing, it's generally accessible. And we, we did add, from our previous design, we did add two additional connections so that there would be a, a direct connection to the, the playground for the younger children and also so that it would be a little easier to get around the tentacle that is to the upper right-hand side.
Very nice. And what's the timeline for completion of this playground?
So I, I can go ahead and speak in regards to that. We are looking at this project to go to Plan Checks on mid-July, end of July. We anticipate about a month turnaround for corrections or anything that comes to us from Plan Check. That will take us into August. We hope to have those corrections back and plans approved. We will probably go out to bid on the project, the construction side of it, sometime in October with a hopeful award in December.
So construction would start in January or February?
Yes, that, that is the initial time estimate.
Okay. Okay, so at this point in time, let's see. If I was to do it in order that I saw Councilman Perez.
All of my questions were answered already, so I no longer need to.
Okay. Councilman Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor Rollins, and thank you, David, for the presentation, and Gabby. I just wanted to, I just want to ask if you guys were able to add any ways to measure the path of the sun, you know, so that we can have like markers for the winter and summer solstice? I know we had mentioned it when we, when, when we had the closed session meeting. I don't know if you guys were able to incorporate it or not.
Brian?
Brian? I don't know if we lost Brian or not.
We might have lost Brian, but that is.
I know, I know that there was something planned in the, kind of the head of the octopus as far as sightlines through that wall that, that, that looks like it, it kind of pops up at the top of the octopus's head. And I know that he was looking at kind of astronomical sightlines through that wall. I don't know if that has been fully detailed yet, but I know that he had plans to, to, to pursue that in those walls, fat walls.
David, I got logged out for a second. I'm back.
Okay.
So I missed whatever you're talking about.
So did you, okay, Councilman Mayor Pro Tem Martinez, could you bring, make that state, that question again to?
Yeah, I, I think David kind of answered it, but I wanted to know if there was a way that the playground was going to be able to measure the path of the sun so that we have like the markers on the winter and summer solstice, especially since, I don't know if you guys know this, but tomorrow's the first day of summer. So tomorrow's the summer solstice.
Not at present, unless, yeah, I'm not, we can, we can look into that for sure.
Well, Brian, I recall that you, you were looking at certain sightlines in the, in the, in the wall of the head of the octopus that, that you were, you were, as far as like sightlines or things that were lining up to astron- astronomical events. So I don't know if that, that has been fully detailed or, or pursued, but that was, I think, the, the last time that we kind of talked about it.
Okay, okay, good. I'm, I'm making a note.
Any other questions? Councilman Martinez?
No, thank you, Mayor Rollins.
Okay, Councilman Gama.
Yeah, so I just, I think having educational points is super important. I, I just want to fully support Mayor Pro Tem's idea to have the winter and summer solstice markers and maybe even a sundial, a working sundial. So I have several questions. How many square feet of concrete is this apparatus going to? It, it's hard to, to understand the scale here. So is there concrete or asphalt under the blue area? What's the brown area? And the, I, I assume the gray area is concrete? And what about the brown area around the swing set? Is all that hardscape?
The brown areas are sand, are just the natural sand. So, yeah, and then all the gray, all the gray and, and the blue and the octopus are, are all concrete. And to be determined which portion might be fall surface, you know, colored, the blue is a colored plot, play surface on top of concrete. And then the octopus itself most likely will be colored, integrally, integrally colored concrete.
So about approximately how many square foot of concrete and, and/or asphalt?
I, I can't give that to you at the moment. I could find it out pretty quickly, but not right at this moment.
Is the octopus head forty feet across or ten feet across? I'm just trying to, to.
Okay, so, yeah, the octopus head is twenty feet across, and it's about twenty-five feet deep or so.
So it looks like the whole, the whole apparatus would be about a hundred and forty feet wide?
Oh.
If the octopus head is twenty feet.
Council, if, if I may just interrupt, Councilmember Gama, we can definitely give you all the specifications at a later time. I don't think Brian has those currently, but that's something definitely that we can provide to you.
Okay, now, one thing, oh, oh, one thing I really would like to elevate and make the central point is the lifeguard stand. And I would hope that, being this is a destination attempt, that, that lifeguard stand be inexplicably visible from the parking lot. I think that really represents Wayneimi Beach in a, in a realistic and honorable way. Our lifeguard program is strong. It's being led by a twenty-year veteran lifeguard. I mean, we, we have a junior lifeguard program. It's, and so I really would hope that, that lifeguard apparatus piece would be super high, super visible, and definitely the center part of this attraction. What about seating area for parents? Where would that be? Would there be any of that?
Yes, yes, there's, there are, there are three primary seating places. If you look to the, above the swing set area, there's a sort of a concrete bubble there. What this drawing doesn't show is it doesn't show the picnic benches that we have there. So we have a couple picnic benches there. We have another picnic bench to the right of, upper right of his head. And then where that right tentacle is, there's a place for two more picnic benches or so. So, yeah, we have everybody sort of looking at the playground and the ocean at the same time and not really looking too much in the other direction at the moment.
Okay, so is it, speaking of lifeguards, I know that without the pier being represented in this drawing, it's really hard to tell. How close or far from the pier will it be?
I, I want to say, because we, we did measure that, because we do have the pier and we have the restaurant there, and it's a couple hundred feet from, from that. So it's, so from where the dolphins are and, and the right side of the play structure, it will be visible and accessible, so they can run across the sand and get to the restaurant. But it's fairly, it's a fairly good separation there.
But what I'm trying to see and visualize is in relation to the lifeguard office, where the lifeguards assemble and get their gear and stuff. And they also have trucks that, four-wheel-drive trucks on the beach that shuttle lifeguards from their staging area. So again, it's just hard to see, but, so maybe in a future drawing, you could, you could show us in scale and in relation to the pier and everything else. It would be really nice to see that. So I love this idea, and I have a major, major concern, and it's the sand. And the sand moves aggressively, sometimes more aggressively than, than other times. And it's my understanding that in all the concrete is going to have to be level. In other words, the, the surface of the beach is going to have to be leveled. Is that accurate?
The concrete will be, if you can think about it as a, I guess, think about it as a, as a very low platform. So it may be it's four to six inches above the sand grade, let's say. And it is a, a piece that's sort of sitting above, and then it transitions to the sand where you see the long, you know, the long gray piece that's going off the drawing at the bottom left.
There's, there's, there's great variances right now. There's, I mean, it's actually a hole, so to speak, but.
Well, we have a grading plan. We have a grading plan of the actual grades that were existed, when, existing when we started the project. And we graded specifically to the existing grade, so we have a grading plan.
But the grade can change, and it will change when we complete our dredge cycle this, this year. But, so again, my, my major concern is, is the sand and how we're going to manage it. And it's, I guess my understanding is that in order to lay concrete, you're going to have to either move sand and create a level surface, or are you going to dig a hole and make, I, I don't know. How, how are you going to accomplish that?
Well, that's a, that's a construction question for sure. So you would excavate sand just like anything else. The big difference is that when you do a concrete walkway, it has a pretty significant thickened edge on either side. Trying to think of what, what it would look like, an upside-down U, the actual paving profile. And so it sort of stays in place by, by sheer gravity and mass. So if the mass of the walkway and the, and the concrete construction is heavy enough, then it stays in place. And your City Public Works have giving, given us some, some specifications for that already. So we know, we, we know what the PSI of the concrete needs to be. We know how deep it needs to be, for what, things that they have done in the past that have been successful. And we're detailing it as such. And if you had our construction drawing in front of you, I could, I could illustrate that a little better.
So you, you've built on beaches before?
I, I haven't designed something specifically on the beach before, but we're working with people who have.
Okay, because what happens is we get these very strong winds and, and the sand moves in a southern direction. So just want to make sure that we aren't creating a, an impossible maintenance.
Council, Councilmember Gama, I can, I can assure you that as we started this design process, one of the main concerns was the sand management. We've taken that into consideration. Like Brian said, Public Works has given us some things. They, they will be, you know, really involved with this project once we start the construction process. Just like anything, we are aware that we will need sand management, and we're preparing ourselves in order to make sure that the Destination Playground is, is a success and definitely something that we want to go ahead and have, be a pride for the residents of Wayneimi to have on our beach.
Yeah, because my, my concern, and Gabby, you know what I'm going to say, like, we, that this pla, this Destination Playground needs to be ready to go every day in the same condition. And so in order for that to happen, then we need to have a very aggressive maintenance program that does a little bit every day to keep it at that, that pristine point for use. You know, we don't want it to be, to fall prey to a sand dune and then not be available for use, so.
No, I, I definitely appreciate all the feedback and the concern. My job obviously is to make sure that. My job obviously is to make sure that this project is completed to the best of our ability and that we're able to maintain it for many, many years to come. And along with that will be the sand management, and we're aware of the issues that we have on our sand, and we are going to be prepared to address those on a need-to-need basis.
Okay, I think that's all my questions. I have one more question. But I'll let it go for now. Hopefully it'll come back to me. Thank you, exciting. And this is being paid for by America Rescue Plan, I believe, right?
There are different funds that will be used for this. We have about $250,000 in surplus property authority funds that are designated for the beach area, which we will be using, and there will be other funding.
Four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars will be out of our
Okay, I know what my last ask was. Can you get a drawing together, that scale that shows it in relation to the pier, the restaurant, the lifeguard station, so that if anyone has concerns, they'll be able to voice them? Because the way it is seated right now, it's like, yeah, it's great, but we don't know exactly where it's going to end up on the beach. Thank you.
Definitely. That's something that we can get for you.
It's very unfortunate that we're, that we're looking at just the playground equipment company drawing, because we have drawings that show it in context, and we did very carefully consider the grading, because it's in a, I mean, a very level spot. There are existing picnic areas there now that would be removed as part of the project, and there are two dunes, just to give you a little bit of context. There are dunes that are near the parking lot, which we avoided on purpose. There's a little bit of grade change there, and then it leveled out, and we sort of stuck in that, that little zone. So we're not too far from the parking lot, but we're a really good long distance from the actual beach.
So are we going to move the picnic areas? We're not going to lose them, are we?
Brian, yeah, we are going to be removing some of the picnic areas, but we are replacing them. So we are relocating them. We will not be losing additional benches or tables at all. We will have to remove them in order to start this project, but we are replacing them in a different location or in the same location.
Right, and remember, we lost, I think, eight picnic areas that haven't been replaced from 2013.
Yes, and it kind of has to do with this, but those benches have been ordered, and as soon as they arrive, we will be installing them.
Councilperson Perez?
Yes, I just wanted to thank Gabby and the team she's working with for the presentation. I think this is a great idea, and I believe that Ms. Basua has taken into all consideration of what the requirements and the needs for our beaches. I'm pretty sure she's fully aware of all the issues that our community, our beach, is impacted with, especially the sand erosion. And I just, I put confidence in her that she's taking to all that into consideration. So thank you.
Many of the questions have already been answered, but I'm just going to reinforce kudos to staff and the developers to come up with a really creative theme that I think will draw people to the beach and draw families and children, so that's a very good thing. Kudos to the fact that you're keeping a prime directive to make it accessible. I appreciate that. I appreciate Mrs. Basua's appreciation that we want to keep this thing well-maintained, and as we look forward in budget, that we, you know, provide the proper support to say that you're able to keep that in good shape. I had a few questions, and maybe that, this will all be concrete. It's not going to be kind of that rubberized concrete, rubberized top to it, or will it be strictly, just strict concrete?
We're proposing a rubberized surface to be where the blue is shown, which is a required fall surface for accessibility, and we have expanded it a bit just for design reasons, to make sure that we didn't have just a little, that we had enough, so that it sort of makes a statement. That is something that will require some maintenance after several years. The rest of it is just regular old concrete that will be easy to maintain.
Okay. My one little point there is, you know, it seems to be appealing to, you know, a wide range of kids. But when I looked over at the swing set, and I have kind of personal experience with that, there, it seems like all of the swings are kind of open swings, and if you have a younger child, there's no adjustment. You know, they have those swings for like two, three, four-year-old toddlers that, you know, they feel comfortable swinging. I know the swing, and this may be, maybe it's something you've already planned, and it's just not in detail there. But I know that younger kids feel it's less safe, and they feel less comfortable being in open-ended swings. And there usually are at least one, maybe two swings that are of like, you know, preschool age, so that they feel confident, the parents feel confident of giving them a swing. Little detail, but
No, that's a big, that's a big detail, and it was a huge discussion at one point. We actually do have, we do have, have anticipated that, and we will have one toddler seat. The big discussion we had was, would it be the accessible seat, or would it be one of the others? And it'll be one of the others.
Okay, okay. With that in mind, thank you for a great presentation. It's something we've long been, all of the councils have long been looking forward to, and I think it fits in with our goals and objectives as far as like making this an attractive place to come for families. So with that, we will move on to the consent agenda calendar. I will, I will now read the titles and the items of the consent calendar prior to the motion. The first one is the minutes of the city council regular meeting for the Port Waenimi Housing, I'm sorry, minutes of the city council regular meeting, the Port Waenimi Housing Authority Board regular meeting, the successor agency to the Port Waenimi Redevelopment Agency Special Meeting, and Housing Successor Agency Special Meeting of June 6, 2022. The second, the recommendation is to approve the minutes of these meetings. Number four is register of dispersments, and the recommendation is to receive and file the register of dispersments for June 1, 2022 through June 13, 2022. May I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
May I have a second? I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, we have a motion by Councilman Perez. Do we have a second?
You didn't read all the items, Mayor.
There were, I only see two items here. Number three, number four, oh, okay. I, no, are all, oh, I guess there's a whole lot of, I'm sorry, I'm moving on to the next page. We have a second reading by title only waiving the full reading of the ordinance amending and adding a new part M to Article 7, Chapter 3 of the Port Waenimi Municipal Code relating to regulating mandatory organic waste disposal reduction. The recommendation is to read by title only waiving full reading of the ordinance and adopt the proposed ordinance amending and adding Part M to Article 7, Chapter 3 relating to the regulating mandatory organic waste disposal reduction. Number six, authorizing the out-of-state travel training. Recommendation to authorize Police Chief Andrew Salinas to attend the FBI National Academy Annual Training Conference in Cleveland, Ohio on July 28 through August 4, 2022. Number seven, the biennial review of the Conflict of Interest Code for the city and the city agencies. Recommendation is direct, direct staff to review the conflict of interest codes of the city of Port Waenimi, Housing Authority, Successor Agency Oversight Successor Board, and the Surplus Property Authority pursuant to Government Code Section 87306.5 to determine if any changes are necessary and submit any of these changes prior to October 1, 2022. Number eight, award contracts to the FGL Environmental Incorporated for water quality analysis. The recommendation is to award a three-year contract to FGL Environmental Santa Paula, California for professional services related to the city of Port Waenimi's water and quality analysis and acting as operating agency of the Port Waenimi Water Agency, that the city council award a three-year contract to FGL Environmental Santa Paula, California for professional services related to the Port Waenimi Water Association Quality, Water Quality Analysis. With that in mind, may I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar?
Move to approve?
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Maybe we have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Protram Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Rollins?
Yes. Okay, we will now move on to public hearings. Number nine, adopt an ordinance to provide an expedited permitting process for electrical vehicle charging stations. The public hearing is now open at, let's see, 7:28 PM. Do any members of the council have any conflicts to disclose at that time? I, I'm not sure whether, I have an electric car. I don't know if that constitutes a conflict to disclose, but I'll at least announce that I have an electric car. Madam Clerk, do you have proof of publication as required by the law? Two, do we have a complete file of reports and exhibits? Thank you. Will staff please present the report? Mr. Tony Stewart?
Great, thank you, and good evening, Mayor. Tony Stewart, Community Development Director. And I'm going to hand this off to Renee Mario, our building official, and she will go ahead and discuss the need for this ordinance. Renee?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Renee Mario, and I am the city's contract building official. The state of California adopted Assembly Bill 1236, which requires the city to adopt an ordinance for the expedited streamlined process of permitting electrical vehicle charging stations. It also requires the city to adopt a checklist of the requirements for the expedited review of eligible permit applications. We are requesting a reading of title, a motion to waive further reading, and introduce an ordinance adding Chapter 9 to the Port Waenimi Municipal Code establishing an expedited permitting process for electrical vehicle charging stations.
Okay. Does, does council have any questions for staff? Councilperson Perez, your hand is up. Is that from before or now?
My hand's not up.
Okay. Now I see Councilperson Hernandez has her hand up. Yes, Council?
Thank you, Mayor Rollins. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Stewart, and our contract administrator. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, but I had a question regarding the location of these charging stations. And I didn't see that mentioned. Can you tell us where these are going to be located?
So this isn't, this isn't an ordinance requiring the city to install charging stations. This is an ordinance requiring that the building department have an expedited review process when applications are submitted, which we actually currently already do. It's just a formality.
Oh, I see. Okay, well, very good. I'm all for that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just had one question. Is this both commercial and residential, or is this strictly commercial?
It's actually both, for commercial and residential.
Okay.
It's very similar to the solar bill that was adopted several years ago, where we had to adopt a process for expedited solar permitting.
Okay. Are there any public comments regarding this item, Madam Clerk?
There are no public comments regarding this item.
Does council have any further comments? If there are none, if there is no further discussion, we will close the public hearing at 7:32 PM. We have a recommendation to introduce the first reading by title only and waive future further readings. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Port Waenimi, California, amending Article 8 Building Regulations of the Port Waenimi Municipal Code, which adds Chapter 9 to implement standards pertaining to the expedited streamlined permitting process for electrical vehicle charging stations. And number two, schedule a public hearing for the city council's July 5, 2022 meeting to consider the adoption of the proposed ordinance. And number three, designate the city clerk to publish a summary of the proposed ordinance at least five days before the city council meeting, at which the proposed ordinance is to be considered for adoption.
Move approval?
Okay, we have a motion to approve. By whom? I was looking down.
Councilwoman Hernandez.
Councilmember, so we have a motion to approve by Councilperson Hernandez.
But I'll second.
We have a second by Councilperson Perez. May I have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Mayor Protram Martinez?
Yes.
And Mayor Rollins?
Yes. I just received a note from Andrew Peake from the Boys and Girls Club. He is back online. Carlos was sick today, but Andrew would like to speak on the earlier recognition. If I could have the pleasure, the agreement with the council at this point in time, I'd like to have Andrew speak. Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I truly appreciate the council's time. My name is Andrew Peake. I'm at the Boys and Girls Clubs of Greater Oxnard and Port Waenimi, and I wanted to come here tonight to speak on behalf of our youth of the year, Carlos Perez, who you were so kind to acknowledge earlier today. He is a truly fantastic young man and is the future of our community. He is going to do great things in the city of Oxnard and in the city of Port Waenimi. I also want to thank the council for their tremendous support of our clubs. It is rare and unique that a city works so closely with a nonprofit like ours. It is a wonderful and inspiring thing, so thank you so much. I know we are all disappointed that Carlos couldn't speak to you tonight, but I know he's going to be delivering the opening remarks when we cut the ribbon at the Port Waenimi Teen Center this fall, and we are thrilled to have our first listening session with our teen group at the end of this month. That is going to be a wonderful addition to the city of Port Waenimi, and we couldn't thank all of the council and Mayor Rollins enough. So thank you so much for having me, and I appreciate you.
Thank you. Yeah, and the invitation is also open at a later date when he feels better, if he'd like to make, because part of, I know this, part of the process is learning for him to speak in public. And what better opportunity than to speak to the city council and express his views, so.
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, we were practicing on Friday, and he was really excited to come and speak to a city council. That was a thrill for him. So I'm sure he would love it when the meetings are back in person to come meet in everyone.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, we will now Okay, we will now move on to number ten. And that is the uh adoption of a resolution and city ordinance. Regarding A B four eighty one. And we will have um Chief Salinas. Uh, make that presentation. Uh, the public hearing is now opened and it is. Seven thirty six. Do any members of the council have any conflicts to disclose? I'm not sure. Um, Madam Clerk, do you have proof of publication as required by law? Do we have a complete file of reports and exhibits?
Yes.
Okay, so at this time, um. Well, Chief. Provide us with the presentation.
Yes, I am just waiting to be giving host responsibilities. And I can get started. You got them. Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, uh, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council and City Staff, I'm here to present in a public hearing a mandated requirement by California state law. Uh, the recommendation this evening is that city council. Uh, conduct a public hearing for the purpose of adopting an ordinance that establishes a military equipment policy. For the Port Huinimi Police Department pursuant to Assembly Bill four eighty one. And now on September thirtieth of two thousand twenty one, California Governor Gavin Newsom signed legislation aimed at reforming law enforcement funding. Acquisition and use of specific types of military equipment. This legislation is now known or referred to as Assembly Bill four eighty one or A B four eighty one. So effective on June first of two thousand twenty two, A B forty one was codified in Government Code section seventy seventy through seventy seventy five. And it mandates we obtain approval from our governing body, U. Via adoption of a military equipment use policy and by ordinance. Prior to the police department obtaining any additional funding. Acquiring or use of such military equipment. So over the past several decades, many law enforcement agencies across the United States have acquired a variety of military surplus equipment from the federal government. And incorporated this equipment into law enforcement operations. Sparking a great deal of criticism and debate about the perception of policing in America becoming militarized. The public was demanding more transparency in regards to the type of police equipment we use to protect our community. So now law enforcement agencies have to adopt a military equipment use policy. And that's what we're doing today uh with the first reading on June twentieth. Uh, the second reading will occur at the next meeting on July fifth. And as per the requirements and per this new city ordinance. Uh, it mandates an annual review uh every year, uh so that will occur July seventeenth of the following year. Uh, the policy uh will list an inventory of all our military equipment. And it will be available via our policy manual on our website uh at the listed. Uh, address as you see below. And again, all future acquisitions of military equipment will also require. Approval uh by the city council. Uh, and we can determine that or update that at every annual uh review. Uh, so each year during the annual review, uh, you will receive an annual report. Uh, we'll review the ordinance, uh, we'll approve or disapprove. A renewal of the authorization of military equipment. And we'll modify the military equipment uh use policy as necessary. Uh, what will inevitably happen is that we'll either have equipment fall off or we'll add additional equipment. Uh, additional equipment uh could uh invariably include a command of vehicle. Uh, we are in the. Process of possibly purchasing Oxnard's uh mobile command post. At a future date as they are uh obtaining a new replacement. Uh, many of you have seen the mobile command post uh that has appeared at the Huinimi Beach Festival most recently. And part of this annual review is that we actually must hold at least one community engagement meeting. Within thirty days of submitting the annual military equipment report to council. And we will begin that process in May of two thousand twenty three. So generally speaking, the equipment furnished to law enforcement was intended to be necessary or beneficial to operations intended to improve the safety of officers as well as the public. And health agencies acquire such equipment in the face of limited budgets. Uh, the materials provided these. Uh, these programs were very diverse and included items ranging from even office equipment all the way to gas masks and rifles as you see. Uh, here on your screen. Uh, we were part and have been a part of what's called the dermo program or stands for Defense Reutilization Marketing. Office Program where we have over the years obtained things such as helmets, binoculars, uh scopes. Uh, office equipment, tables and chairs, lockers, uh and even gas masks. Uh, and we still have a very limited supply of these types of items in our inventory. So let's review what military equipment is or what that definition is. Uh, what is also important to note that the tim- the term military equipment expands beyond equipment that has a. Default application to military use. So for intents and purposes of A B forty one, the term in this legislation more broadly applies to fifteen different categories of equipment. Uh, some of which are not typically used by the military. So we will quickly review all fifteen of these categories. And it should be noted that some of these items can actually be purchased by the public, such as drones and automatic rifles. So the first category is unmanned uh or remotely piloted. Uh, ground vehicles or drones, as you see in the two pictures here. Uh, of which we don't have an official drone in our inventory, nor do we have any ground uh units or robots. Uh, but that's not to say that I believe we do have a drone, official drone purchase on the horizon. Uh, we don't have what's called an MRAP, which is a mine resistant ambush protected vehicle. Uh, unlike the city of Santa Paula, uh, they have one and I believe are the only um city in the county that actually has that type of vehicle. Uh, number three is what we call a Humvee or High Mobility Multipurpose Wheel Vehicle. Uh, the city of Oxnard, uh, the Sheriff's Department, as well as Ventura PD have these type of vehicles. We do not. Uh, but we obviously have access to these vehicles in the need of an emergency. So all, we don't have any of the items uh in these three categories. Uh, item number four is a track armored vehicle, as you see in the picture here. Uh, we do not have that type of, of vehicle. Uh, number five is a command and control vehicle. Uh, we do have one of those vehicles in our inventory. Uh, we use it as a command post at any critical incidents in our city. Another example here would be uh the city of Oxnard's mobile command post, which again you've seen at the Huinimi Beach Festival. Uh, we, number six, we don't have any weaponized aircraft or vessels or vehicles of any kind. And number seven, battering rams, slugs and breaching apparatuses. Uh, we do have um breaching or could have access to what we call breaching shotguns. Uh, but those are more readily used by SWAT teams and so that there is a possibility that uh. Oxnard or Ventura, the Sheriff's Department, could use these types of devices in our cities at a future date. Uh, number eight, uh, firearms of fifty caliber or greater. Uh, we do not have these types of weapons in our inventory, nor do we have ammunition of fifty caliber or greater. And then number ten, uh specialized weapons of less than fifty caliber, uh which we do have, uh as you see in the pictures here. Uh, such as uh AR fifteens or what we call patrol rifles. Uh, we do have these. Uh, weapons in our inventory. Number eleven is any firearm or firearm accessory that is designed to launch or. Launch explosive projectiles, which we do not have. Number twelve are pepperball guns or explosive breaching tools. Which we do have four pepperball guns in our inventory. Number thirteen are Taser Shockwave or Microwave Weapons, Water Cannons. Or LRADs, and we do not have any of those. And number fourteen are what we call projectile launchers or beanbag. Uh, shotguns, but which we do have one in our arsenal. And then number fifteen is any other equipment as determined by a governing body or state agency to require additional oversight. So uh inventory summary is we do have one police command vehicle. We have seventeen semi-automatic assault rifles. Uh, which are two two three caliber rounds. Uh, we have two AR fifteen semi-automatic patrol rifles which fire. Five five six caliber rounds, and then we have three AR fifteen semi-automatic patrol rifles. Which fire forty caliber rounds, four pepperball launchers and one less lethal beanbag shotgun. So the police department is seeking the city council's adoption of the police department's military equipment use policy by ordinance. Everyone should have received a copy of that policy. The city council may approve, deny or request a modification to the policy. Uh, the policy which you should all have a copy of is section seven oh six of the Port Huinimi Police Department Policy Manual. And will be available online to pursuant to the approval of the city ordinance. The police department will provide an annual report to the city council along with a request to approve the policy. Beginning July twenty third, I'm sorry, July twenty twenty three. And that will also come with it uh. Community input on this policy within thirty days of submitting the annual report to city council. So to that end, uh, the police department is committed to using contemporary tools and equipment. To safeguard the public that it serves. Uh, in fact, many of the items deemed to be military equipment by A B forty one have been employed by the Port Huinimi Police Department. And law enforcement agencies across the nation for a considerable amount of time. In order to specially and specifically protect and reduce risk to our community members. So these items provide peace officers with the ability to safely resolve volatile situations. Which otherwise might rise to the level of lethal force encounters. With that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have this evening.
Okay. Uh, first online, I have councilman, Councilperson Perez.
I don't have a question. Um, I thank you for the presentation and I do have a comment. Though about the ridiculousness of criticism that. Of our requirement or, or want to purchase military grade weaponry. Some of those. Don't seem like military grade at all. But the fact that the police in essence by far already military and structure. I mean, your chain of command is very similar to military. Your training is similar. To military, just about everything that you do is similar in military structure already, so. The criticism is misplaced, but I thank you for the presentation.
Yeah, there are a lot of people out there that seem to think that we have a lot of these specialized or secret weapons. Uh, that we pull out and we really don't, uh especially an agency of this size. Uh, even the surrounding agencies that we have, uh, don't have those types of military weapons that I thought. People would all of a sudden see revealed by these agencies as a result of this um. Required ordinance.
I do hope though, I, you know, we get more non-lethal, more of the non-lethal weapons. Probably useful.
Absolutely, we will actually be adding more less lethal shotguns, what we call the beanbags. Uh, and other devices uh to help limit the amount of physical encounters uh between the officers and suspects.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilperson Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor Rollins, and thank you, Chief Salinas, for an excellent and very thorough report. You know, um, twenty years ago, when I was working for the County Office of Emergency Services, we were responsible for. Um, the Homeland Security Grant Program. And we purchased many of these items on behalf of the cities that we allocated funding and, and supported the purchase of. Um, some of these items that are considered military grade. Um. But the argument that we made was that we had to keep up with what was happening in the community. You know, people breaking the law were getting more sophisticated. They were having, they, they had a, a, you know, the. Automatic rifles. They had better equipment and better firepower than some of our law enforcement agencies. And we had to have comparable equipment that kept our officers and our community safe. Um, so to me, this whole uh narrative, this debate that's been going on now for many years, um. Seems to. Fails to address that situation and the situations where police find themselves sometimes in, in very dangerous situations. And um where they need the, the safety and protections of the vehicles like the Bearcats and the Humvees and, and so forth. So. Uh, I echo uh Councilwoman Perez's comments and um I support what we're doing here and I. I'm, I'm actually, you know, relieved too that we don't have some of those equipment pieces that are um so controversial um in other communities. So uh. Anyway, this is something I will support. Thank you.
Uh, yeah.
And for the lack of a better term, uh, we were definitely outgunned uh for quite some time and uh. You know, the North Hollywood shootout uh was a classic incident. Uh, where agencies really started looking at uh what they needed to do to best. Outfit their patrol officers and not just SWAT officers or specialized units.
Um, yeah, I had a few comments. Um, first of all, anything to protect. Our police in a more increasingly dangerous world. Uh, I'm in favor of um especially some of the incidents that I've. We've all heard on the news lately, anything that we can do to. Protect the lives of our community in a quick manner and, you know, i- is, and is really, really important. Um. Questions that I have would be, uh, there's a, seems to be a wide array of potential equipment that we can purchase. Um. Is there some priorities that, you know, you, from your standpoint, you feel. Are severely lacking that, you know, we should kind of act on sooner than later?
So in terms of equipment on that list, uh, drone.
Yeah, I mean, there was a wide range of.
Absolutely, so uh, most definitely a drone, aerial drones, uh, and actually. Uh, very sophisticated drones, drones that have the ability to drop, let's say, life vests out in the ocean. Uh, drones that have the capability of surveying locations. Uh, sending out alarms or sirens, uh, yes, um, a mobile command post. Uh, that is another one, and then increasing our inventory as it relates to um less lethal weaponry. Uh, are things that I see being added to this list in the next twelve months.
Okay, and then um. I'm assuming by purchasing it from the um. Federal government, uh, is it quite a bit cheaper? I mean, what is, um, do we get it at half off or?
I wish.
Uh, as opposed to just buying it on the open market?
No, we do buy it from specialized vendors, but uh they do, the prices seem to be a lot higher when uh. They sell this type of equipment to government agencies.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Uh. Do we have any public comments regarding this item, Madam Clerk?
And Mr. or Mayor Rollins, sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry, um. Councilperson Gama?
Yes, um, thank you. As always, your presentations are stimulating and very interesting and very thorough. Um. So a number of people approached me on Saturday morning at beach cleanup about an accident that occurred on Surfside Drive over the weekend. And they're quite excited about it and um. And it just came to me like, because I know how difficult it is. To. We could hear the speeding and we could see the burnouts. But I know you can't be everywhere, but the drone, the drone sounds like a possible solution. For those type of instances and um is there any talk to, to begin to look at using drones for monitoring traffic? Speeders or burnouts or any other thing?
No, they, uh, not for that specific use, but you bring up a very valid point is that this. Drones can be deployed rather quickly and overhead uh in specifically our beach area. Uh, to help locate those types of offenders. Uh, so I do see that being a possibility in the near future. We do have quite a few. Cameras at the beach now, um, and I'm talking about cameras that record vehicles coming in and out of the area, and that's where. We're really going to get value out of those cameras because they have vehicle identification technology. So if we could get people just to call in and even just give us a type of vehicle. A color and a make model without a license plate, we can actually identify the vehicle and the license plate that comes along with it. So we're getting there in terms of technology and uh we'll definitely look at using drones. Uh, as a means of trying to curb uh even things such as speeding. Um, but I'm hoping to address that when we get a motor officer here by the end of the year, as soon as we get our staffing up to where it needs to be.
Yeah, and I, I know you know this. I don't have to, it's no surprise, but the fireworks situation is. Blossoming again, um, not only in our city but surrounding cities and it's um. My poor dog just can't handle it. It's, it's.
So we deployed the drone, uh, was it last, two years ago to and experimented with trying to isolate. Where firework violations were coming from, and it was helpful. I mean, we were able to get three or four violations. Uh, but uh, that would take quite a few drones to help actually curb that issue. Uh, but, uh, that would take quite a few drones to help actually curb that issue, and it's it's going to be difficult to to solve this, uh, firework problem, uh, that we have countywide.
Yeah, I know, I know it frustrates people, and I just hope that, um, what advice do we have for for our residents with fireworks? Just call in, right?
Advice is there? Yes, to call it in and to remind our residents that they're, uh, illegal.
Yeah, thank you.
Chief Chief Salinas, I just had one, uh, would be the, um, goal to, uh, would like the police themselves be operating the drones? Would you need to hire somebody who's special specialty is, you know, doing these drones? Uh, you know, would that take away from the existing, uh, jobs and responsibilities that they have? Uh, what is your kind of philosophy on this?
No, so it would be a collateral assignment. Uh, they would go to a specialized training. Uh, we do have one licensed pilot right now, um, and that's Scott Madelon. Uh, he's actually licensed to fly a drone, uh, even in, um, secure airspace, we'll we'll call it, uh, here along the beach and in and around, uh, this area, which is flanked by two bases, uh, as as well as the auction at airport. Uh, so we do have those privileges and have the ability to deploy a drone in emergency situation if necessary. Uh, but we, once we get a certified, uh, police drone, uh, we will be training at least a couple of officers where this will be a collateral assignment, meaning they will be doing this on top of their normal patrol duties. Uh, and so I will, I actually see it as a valuable position in this department, especially with the direction we're going in uh, right now and the types of different uses that we can get out of our our drone.
Yeah, in fact, um, I think, um, City Manager Connors, uh, gave me an example of the, uh, Scott Madeline using that drone as they, uh, pictured me down at the beach one day. So, okay, um, with no, uh, no further comments from the council, uh, and there's no public comments, um, with no further discussion, we'll, we've been closing the public hearing at seven fifty-eight PM. We have before us a recommendation to conduct a public hearing for the purpose of adopting an ordinance that establishes a military equipment use policy for the Port Wayne, Nimi Police Department. Uh, this is an introduction for the first reading by title only, waiving further readings of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Port Wayne, Nimi, California, Adopting a Military Equipment Use Policy Pursuant to Government Code Section Seven Zero Seven Zero E T S E Q, parentheses, A B four eighty-one." Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, and I think I saw, um, Mayor Protem Martinez raised his hand as a second. So maybe we have a roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Rollins?
Yes. Okay, we will now move on to number eleven. The the levy and collection of annual assessments for assessment District Number Eighty-seven dash one, Assessment District Number Ninety-one dash one, and Assessment District Number Ninety-five dash three, and an agreement with Ventura County Auditor Controller for the billing of direct assessments. The hearing is, uh, the hearing is now open at eight PM. Do any members of the council have any conflicts to disclose? Seeing none, um, Madam Clerk, do you have a proof of publications as required by law, and do you have a complete file of the reports and exhibits?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um, will staff, uh, Mr. Villapenos, um, please provide us with a report on this subject?
Uh, good evening, uh, City Council, uh, Mayor Rollins. This again is the annual, um, levy of assessments for, um, the, uh, lighting, drainage, and, uh, park and median maintenance. The, and, uh, the city formed its Lighting Maintenance Assessment District Eighty-seven dash one in nineteen eighty-eight for the purpose of maintaining and servicing public lighting facilities owned by either the city or Southern California Edison and located within the public rights of way. Parkway and Median Maintenance Assessment District Ninety-one dash one was formed in nineteen ninety-one for the purpose of maintaining landscaping in the Parkway's meetings within the public rights of way. In nineteen ninety-five, the city formed the Port Wayne, Nimi, um, Parks and Maintenance Assessment District Ninety-five dash three for the purpose of maintaining city parks. In nineteen ninety-seven, this latter district was renamed the Port Wayne, Nimi Drainage Maintenance Assessment District, and the description of the maintenance and improvements was modified to conform with the requirements of Proposition Two Eighteen. At its meeting at June sixth, twenty twenty-two, the city council adopted resolutions of intention which initiated the annual procedure proceedings relating to districts for fiscal years twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, set forth the work to be done in the districts. Preliminary approved the engineers' reports for the district set June twentieth, twenty twenty-two at six thirty to be broadcast from the council chambers at the time and place for the required public hearings to review the cost of the capital maintenance and operations of the districts, to receive and consider any protests to the work or assessments, and to set the annual assessments on the properties within the districts. The resolutions ordering the levying and collection of the assessments within the districts presented herein within for consideration and adoption are the final resolutions that must be adopted to levy the annual assessments for the three existing assessment districts. The resolutions approve and adopt the engineers' reports on file with the city clerk, confirm the diagrams and assessments prepared in connection with the districts, order the levying and collection of assessments within the districts, and authorize and direct the city clerk to file certified copies of the diagrams and assessments with the county auditor of the County of Ventura no later than July fifth, twenty twenty-two. The engineers' reports describe the improvements, maintenance, and assessment methodology relating to each district. Due to the requirements of Proposition Two Eighteen, the same assessment calculation methodology has been used in fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Engineers' report was used in, um, the assessment districts is desired, then Proposition Two Eighteen requirements would need to be followed. This procedure would require an election to approve the new tax. The contemplate at work for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three relates exclusively to improvements and maintenance work which are intended to qualify for the capital cost maintenance operations exemption. Uh, one grandfathered exemption, the rates of this year are the same as prior years. Fiscal impact, funding for the proposed maintenance and improvement expenses will be provided by assessment charges in the engineers' report, and will be levied against those properties receiving the special benefit from the services provided. The revenue generated from these assessments will be four hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-three. The fees for services will be collected by the Ventura County Auditor Controller or dictated by the agreement for billing or direct assessments. Are there any questions?
Um, no, hearing no questions. Are there any public comments regarding this item, Madam Clerk?
No hands raised, and I do not have any votes.
I sense with, um, I I I I I didn't hear you real clearly, but I'm assuming that means we have no comments, correct?
Oh, no public comments.
Okay, great, I'm sorry. Um, uh, so assuming that the council doesn't have any further comments, um, we will close the public hearing at eight oh five PM. We have before us a recommendation to, number one, adopt a resolution of the city council of the City of Port Wayne, Nimi, California, ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the Lighting Maintenance Assessment District Eighty-seven dash one for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, pursuant to the Landscape and Lighting Act of nineteen seventy-two, and adopt a resolution of the city council of the City of Port Wayne, Nimi, California, ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, pursuant to the Landscape and Lighting Act of nineteen seventy-two, and, number three, adopt a resolution of the city council of the City of Port Wayne, Nimi, California, ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the Port Wayne, Nimi Drainage Maintenance Assessment District Number Ninety-five dash three for the fiscal year July first, two thousand twenty-two, and ending on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, pursuant to the Landscape and Lighting Act of nineteen seventy-two, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. May I have a second? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Okay.
I'm second.
I think, uh, I think I got, I heard first, uh, councilperson Hernandez, followed by co, uh, second by councilperson Perez. May we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Martinez?
Yeah.
And Mayor Rollins?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving to number twelve, adopt a resolution granting a special use permit, number seventeen dash twenty-two for the Wayne, Nimi Beach Festival. Uh, the public hearing is now opened at eight oh seven PM. Do any members of the council have any conflicts to disclose? Hearing none, uh, Madam Clerk, do you have a proof of publication and required a publication as required by the law, and do we have a complete file of reports and exhibits?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, uh, will staff, meaning Tony Stewart, Community Development Director, please provide a report to us?
I thank you again, Mayor, and I'm actually going to turn this over to, uh, Police Chief Salinas, who is our resident expert at the Wayne, Nimi Beach Festival, uh, to present this for you this evening. Thank you.
Oh, thanks, Tony. So, uh, everyone, I'm, uh, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council, City Staff, uh, and the public, I'm here to present on, uh, the Wayne, Nimi Beach Festival. Uh, it is already quickly upon us. Uh, and so, uh, this is a public hearing, uh, to seek, uh, approval, and to adopt a resolution of the city council, the City of Port Wayne, Nimi, deeming a temporary event exempt from CEQA and conditionally approving special use permit number seventeen dash twenty-two, which is the Wayne, Nimi Beach Festival located at five fifty East Surfside Drive um, and Ocean View Drives. Now, um, so what I'd like to do is start out this, uh, hearing also is for the next five years, uh, meaning it's adopting the dates for the next five years, which I have listed here. Uh, the Wayne, Nimi Beach Festival, uh, will always be the last weekend in August. Uh, it allows, uh, for a number of things to occur. It allows the entire county as well as our community to know when, uh, the Wayne, Nimi Beach Festival will occur, uh, so they can plan for it every single year because it will be the same dates every single year. Now, you see an asterisk there in twenty twenty-five, uh, even though that's the last weekend in August, um, it's actually Labor Day weekend because Labor Day is actually the very first Monday of September. So we may go three days on that day, and if we do so, we will ask special permission from the city council at that point. But that's why there's an asterisk by that date. So also joining me on this video presentation is our festival director, Maya Zumaya, as well as Steve Kinney, uh, who will be available for questions during this presentation. Uh, so here is a picture of last year's festival. Uh, it's the entrance. Uh, on the right, you see last year's flyer or publication, uh, and it was deemed Wayne, Nimi Beach Festival is back, so that has now changed uh, for twenty twenty-two. Uh, we are now, uh, bigger than ever. Um, the first year, uh, was, I would classify as a incredible success, uh, due to the hard work of of quite a few individuals, uh, including, um, our council, um, who was present a- at the event. Uh, and so we want to ride on this success, uh, into this next year. Uh, and so, um, hopefully with the approval of council, uh, we can get that done. So I'd like to start out, uh, first with our Board of Directors for twenty twenty-two. I mentioned our new festival manager, Maya Zumaya, who's on the call. Uh, our festival co-chairs, uh, myself and Steve Kinney. Uh, Marty Lieberman is in charge of sponsorships. Sandra Montez Serna is in charge of all of our vendors, uh, food as well as arts and crafts. Uh, David Moss is in charge of our entertainment, and Kelly Meehan, uh, from Surly Creative is in charge of our marketing. And our site manager is Eric Kinkade, who has many years of experience, including, uh, the last ten years with the California Strawberry Festival. So I'm going to start out by recapping last year, uh, and showing, uh, the video uh, that captured our success, uh, from twenty twenty-one. So with that, let's talk about last year's numbers. So last year, we had nine thousand people, um, in attendance on Saturday, thirteen thousand on Sunday. Uh, we sold seventy-eight thousand ride tickets for the two-day weekend. Uh, we had four thousand people in our Cannabis Cove, and we actually had two hundred and twelve people uh, use our bicycle valet service. And we actually had vaccinations on-site for that two-day weekend, and forty-six people were vaccinated. But more importantly, twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, was made by the nonprofit organizations that participated in our event. Uh, there's a list of those organizations. Um, it would be safe to say that we are no longer a community festival, but more so a regional or county festival, uh, which attracts people from all over the region, uh, not just from our small community, uh, based on those numbers. So looking at the numbers, this is what we expect, uh, this year. We expect fifteen thousand people on Saturday, seventeen thousand on Sunday. We expect to sell over a hundred thousand ride tickets this year because our carnival area, uh, will be expanding. Uh, we expect seven hundred, seven thousand five hundred people to visit Cannabis Cove as we've expanded that area as well. And we expect over four hundred people to use our bicycle valet service, which is free to the public. So let's go over some of the details, uh, regarding this year's festival. Uh, it is a Saturday, Sunday event on August twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, uh, from eleven AM to seven PM. Uh, we will not be open late on Saturday night, uh, for the carnival rides as, uh, it was. as it was shown not to increase our revenue. Obviously, the festival will be located at Wainimi Beach Park, which includes parking lots B and C, Ocean View Drive, and Surfside Drive, between parking lot A and Surfside Two. And again, we expect an average attendance of about fifteen thousand people per day. Admission is free, which is very unique, and parking will be ten dollars. Some people ask, well, why do we charge ten dollars for parking? Two reasons. One, it's already eight dollars to park at the beach all day. But in order to have a free event, and also to be able to shuttle people from our remote parking locations, we need to generate revenue to help offset, offset those expenses, including to pay our explorers, which handle a majority of our parking lots. So we will begin setup and closure of the streets on Tuesday, August twenty-third, which will include Ocean View Drive and parking lots B and C. We will close down Surfside Drive on Friday, August twenty-sixth. The reason for that closure is to allow for the chalk artists to start getting set up, as well as setting up our community stage, which is now located on Surfside Drive. Live entertainment will begin at eleven A M. and include at six thirty. We will have live entertainment on two stages, the main stage, as well as the community stage. They will be on offsetting times, meaning the community stage will have a twelve o'clock show, and then the main stable, main stage will have a one o'clock show, and then they will alternate. So no one is playing on the same stage at the same time. Security will be provided by Viper Security, along with the Port Wainimi Police Department. Ride tickets will still be sold for a dollar each. And anyone wanting information in regards to the Wainimi Beach Festival can go to the website, which is www.wainimibeachfestival.org. So here's the layout of the festival. It has increased in size by about fifteen percent. We have moved the community stage out on a Surfside Drive, as you can see there. We removed it from the carnival area. This will allow it to have more exposure and will actually allow people to toggle between the two stages, based on what act is playing. We've moved the chalk art exhibition down closer to parking lot, the entrance to parking lot A, where our main entrance will now be. And then the yellow cubes you see there will be, will allow for more vendors, as well as nonprofits. And we are, we actually have a special name for this area. I think we're calling it the Community Village Area. Our V I P Lagoon will also increase in size, as well as our Cannabis Cove area. And we actually hope to have more food vendors and food trucks on-site this year. This is a a more in-depth look of that location I was talking about. Along Surfside Drive is where the community stage will be located, along with our main entrance. So the Wainimi Beach Festival will still have live entertainment, the Tony Young Community Stage. We will still have a sidewalk chalk art exhibition. We will have a V I P Lagoon, the main stage, an arts and crafts aisle, the Hang Ten Fun Zone, food and drinks, the Cannabis Cove, and a sandcastle exhibition, which will be sponsored and facilitated by our local Boys and Girls Club. Here is the parking map layout of the event site at the beach. We one of our greatest challenges is not having the ability to park cars over at the port. So we will be parking cars along Surfside Drive between Ventura Road and Market Street. That area of roadway will be closed. We will also have parking in parking lot A, which will accommodate V I P parking handicap and entertainers. And then we'll have parking in parking lot E, which will accommodate vendors and volunteers. And then I mentioned the Bicycle Valet Service, which will be located right near the entrance across from parking lot A. Now, this is a greater overall map of our remote off-site parking locations, which will now include the Port Wainimi Community Center and Library. It'll include Old Mary's Market Parking Lot, Bard Elementary School, and Wainimi Elementary School. We haven't spoken with them yet, but we hope that we can add additional parking at these locations, as well as two fifty South Surfside Drive, which is a private parking lot that we've contracted last year, and we hope to use this year. And then we hope that we can engage in conversations with the V F W, so they can actually charge for parking at their location. Anything noted in a yellow circle will be a remote shuttle lot and will be serviced by Durham Bus School Services again this year. And the red remote parking lot there means that people can actually walk to the location. So if you didn't know by now, you can actually go on to wainimibeachfestival.org to look up any information that you need for this upcoming year, including our festival lineup on our main stage, which is listed here, which includes Twisted Gypsy, New Orleans Suspects, The Enth Power, and the Phantom Blues Band, just to name a few. We've also started our social media campaign. You can follow us on Facebook, as well as Instagram. We have quite a few followers, and if you want to get up-to-date information, this is also a good place to have that. So I encourage everyone to follow these two websites or social media platforms. And then if you want to volunteer for this, then anyone that's listening remotely to the City Council meeting, you can go on to our website and download a volunteer application. So with that, if you have any questions, myself, Maya, or Steve Kinney would be more than happy to answer any of your questions.
Right. So do we have any questions? Okay. I, I just had a few. My first question would be, those who have a city beach parking permit, will they be charged ten dollars?
It will not be charged ten dollars, as long as they show their beach parking permit.
The remote parking sites, will those agencies benefit from being able to park there? Will they be charged, I don't know, are they going to be charged ten dollars so they can use the shuttle? How will, is there a way that, you know, the schools or something might benefit by providing those facilities for parking for the event?
So we will not be charging to use the remote parking lots as an incentive to use them and not park at the beach. We will engage in conversations with the school district to see what we can do to help make this profitable for them as well, whether it be a donation directly from our event, or maybe donation bins, or give them the opportunity to sell items, such as water and sodas from these remote shuttle locations.
Right, because I, I know, like, when I've seen the Strawberry Festival, and they have a number of remote locations, so it's different agencies, and their schools benefit from providing that service. The, first of all, kudos to keeping the price of rides a dollar. That's an extremely attractive thing for families this year, especially with, like, you know, the rise in prices of everything else. That's a real neat thing. Is there any, any kind of strategy towards increasing the sand sculpture contest? I know last year it was a valiant effort, but like, I know we can do a whole lot better and get more people involved.
We sure did. So we decided to move the sand sculpting contest towards the Alaska Memorial. We found that people did not want to hike all the way out towards the shoreline. So we will now be having the sandcastle competition or exhibition by the Alaska Memorial, so people can actually view the sculptors from the walkway or just a couple feet onto the sand. We've also entered into an agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Oxnard and Port Wainimi, who will be facilitating this exhibition and bringing other youth and other clubs to our beach from across the county, as well as nearby boys and girls clubs in other counties, such as Malibu, Santa Clarita, and Carpinteria, who will then compete in their own exhibition and competition on Saturday.
It's a great idea. The, last year, I know initial, the initial goal was actually to break even or make money. And while I noticed that a lot of different groups benefited by it, I think in the long term, I think we lost a certain amount of money. Am I correct? And is there anything now that we're going to look towards breaking even or making a little money?
So a couple of things there as well. Now that we are have one year under our belt, it's not that difficult now to get sponsors, because they've seen our attendance totals. We actually have the data and statistics. And so Marty should be helping getting us more sponsorship money, which will help offset these costs, as well as having a few more cannabis businesses onboard. So our desire and hope is to break even. But I know Steve can talk a little bit about, a little bit more about what the final result or outcome was from last year's bottom line.
Sure, Chief. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. You're right, Mayor. Our, our goal last year was break even. We came extremely close to that. Actually, we had anticipated some parking revenue from one source that ultimately did not come through, and it was just that amount that left us short. I, I recall roughly about twenty thousand dollars was the deficit for the entire festival last year. So that's twenty thousand dollars on a roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollar scale event. And for a first time, we were not, not displeased with that outcome. Chief just mentioned a couple items that argue for greater revenue this year. In addition to, you know, simply a greater number of people coming through the gates on both Saturday and Sunday, should be revenue increases across the board. We, you know, we think we just learned lessons on some cost controls last year as well to get cracked in this year. I think we're just optimistic that it's just, you know, one year's worth of a tighter event this year than it was last year. And with the community sport that was shown then and that we look for this year, I think our, our break-even goal is a modest one.
Yeah, I just want to comment. I, I know when I first was involved in the festival, the city contracted out the entire one, and I think it cost close to fifty thousand dollars to run the entire event. And so, getting close to twenty, I guess, is a good goal as far as, as we move forward to at least evening out for this great event. I, I, I know last year also, we had some council involvement in the actual committees, the committee, and I'm not sure if that's something that you're planning as we move forward. I mean, not, not a decision now, but I know last year that was a good input to have. That's all my particular comments. Yeah, I'm, I'm looking forward to it. I think it's going to be a premier event. Each year, we build on it and make it even better. And I know that we're trying to make it more ingrown as far as the management of it. So I think that's a, a good step in the right direction. Councilperson Perez?
Yes, Chief. Thanks for the presentation. I have a question. Will dogs be allowed inside the beach festival?
So I'm going to defer that question to Maya. That was a bone of contention last year, as we knew it would be. Bone, get it? Yeah, thank you. So obviously, service animals are allowed. I've seen dogs, and then you kind of have these support animals, which run the gamut and could pose a problem, especially at a very crowded event. And so, our desire is to have a policy where only service animals are allowed inside the event. But that's very difficult to do, and we will try our best to help maintain that line. But I know Maya has done a little bit more research as it relates to seeing what the fair does, to seeing what locations, like what Disneyland does, and how other events are able to restrict animals into their locations. Maya, do you have anything you want to comment?
Hi, Mayor Rollins and councilmembers. Thank you for putting me on today. Yes, like you said, we are working with the fairgrounds and getting some more research done on how we can restrict dogs or allow service dogs to come on-site, but control that. So we're still working on that.
Councilperson, Councilperson Gama?
Yeah, it's, I don't know. I would like to go in the other direction to try and figure out how we can accommodate people with their pets. I think the world is becoming more and more dog-friendly. I mean, just about everywhere I go, there's dogs, and they're not service dogs. I mean, I see them in supermarkets. I see them in Costco. Just about everywhere, so my hope is that we could try to accommodate more dogs, be dog-friendly, be uniquely Wainimi dog-friendly, perhaps. But anyways, I, I would just hope that we could try to open it up a little bit more. There's many examples of relaxed attitudes about being dog-friendly. I mean, I was up in Morro Bay. I mean, there's, it's just pretty interesting world that more and more public agencies and businesses are, are becoming dog-friendly. So I hope we could, rather than just focus on restrictions.
Absolutely. The kind of catch twenty-two to that is, while we would welcome dogs, we have to be mindful that our beach doesn't welcome dogs as well. So people that come from out of county or out of city, who aren't familiar with our ordinances, bring their dogs and then want to take them out onto the beach. So we kind of have to balance that a little bit.
Councilperson Perez?
Yes, also, there's the inherent risk of, although maybe the majority of people bringing their dogs will have dog-friendly, noise-friendly, people-friendly animals, but that doesn't mean everyone will, so we run the risk of a dog being spooked by loud noises, crowds, and biting someone. So especially in a closed encounter, where there's going to be thousands of people in a small area.
So, and you just recall, I just recalled the car show was dog-friendly, was it not?
I believe so. I, I don't think there was any.
I hope so, because I have my dog with me.
Yeah, no, I, I don't think there was any prohibition to, to dogs at that event.
There, there was a lot of dogs at the event, too. So anyways.
It's a very good.
I think it just points to, you know, Maya's comment that we're looking to sources like Ventura County Fair and other fairs around the area for advice and their experience on this issue, because they've had to deal with it longer than we have, and they have to deal with crowds and the concerns that Councilwoman Perez mentioned. So I hope we're going to get some good, good guidance from those sources.
Councilperson Hernandez?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Rollins. Well, with regards to the dog issue, do you imagine that this might come back to City Council for a policy decision? Or do you think you'll work it, work it out on the committee level?
No, the, the board would most definitely work that, that part of it out, and we would make it very visible and known, not only on our website, but via social media, so people are very much aware of our policy prior to the event.
Okay. And then with regards to the board compa, composition, where is Reach in this committee structure? Is Reach a member of the?
That's my role there.
So would Bob, so would Mayor Prochem be involved on that committee, or no? As a representative from Reach?
Right, that, that again is, that's my role. Councilwoman Hernandez, since I'm the president of the Reach Board, that's the seat I'm filling.
So you play the, you represent Reach? Okay.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It opens up a bag of worms, but maybe. It opens up a bag of worms, but maybe staff can get back to us later on. If dogs are allowed on, in a program, they're sanctioned to be allowed, and one of them gets free and does some kind of unforeseen damage. Who is liable for that? And I, I don't know that question. Perhaps that's something that staff can bring to our city attorney as to whether or not, what the liability is. I know there's service animals, and then there's, I don't know, sympathy animals. There's all sorts of different categories now. But I guess my one concern is a, an animal that's not controllable, no matter how much the owner tries to control that dog, you know, and whether they do some kind of damage. I would hate to see us have some kind of a lawsuit based on that. Not that I have any problem with the dogs. It's just, I'd like to get that kind of verified one way or the other, what the liability might be. Do we have any public comments regarding this item at this point, Madam Clerk?
I do not have any written comments, and I do not see any translation due, so there are no public comments.
Okay. And I'm assuming there are no more council comments at this time. So if there's no further discussion, we will close the public hearing at 8:37 PM. We have a recommendation before us. At the conclusion of this public hearing, adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Port Waenimi deeming a temporary event exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and conditionally approving a special use permit number 17-22, known as the Waenimi Beach Festival, located at 550 East Surfside Drive and Surfside and Oceanside Drives. May I have a motion and a second?
Move to approve?
We have a motion to approve by Councilperson Perez and a second by Mayor Protem Martinez. May we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
And Mayor Rollins?
Yes. We will now move on to number 13. Appointment of a City Council Member to an Ad Hoc Port Museum, Port Waenimi Museum Governance Committee. Will staff present a report? Ms. Hanley.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, staff, and members of the public. Item 13 on the agenda pertains to staff's request for the appointment of a council member to an Ad Hoc Museum Governance Committee. As stated in the staff report provided, the museum was identified within the city's strategic plan as an area of focus with regards to reducing potential risk exposures, rehabilitating the building's interior, and aligning the museum's mission statement along with the collection and display pieces. This requested appointment is the first formal step in assembling said committee. Staff has retained Dr. Laura Gobyle, the Director of the United States Navy Seabee Museum, as a consultant to facilitate a day-long charrette tentatively slated for July 20th. The foremost goal will be to develop and approve a strong mission statement, which will then allow staff to reinvigorate the museum top to bottom, encompassing substantial improvements in facility, finances, collections, exhibits, and education. The genesis of the key objectives I'm mentioning are dependent on the newly intended direction that will be defined by this Ad Hoc Committee. We're fortunate to have incredible volunteer resources that have critical knowledge as far as the current contents and collection items. The museum was resurrected and sustained, as most of you know, up until the COVID pandemic because of the personal investment of these key community members. Those parties have also been identified as essential participants going forward through this process. Late last year, we met with the museum's volunteer curator and additional representative to explain the city's intention to move forward with the building rehabilitation and collection refinement. And actually, exciting, excitingly enough, we also have received timely inquiries from two citizens with backgrounds in the museum profession as well. Internally, we've networked with the Museum of Ventura County and intend to reach out to the Friends of the Bard amongst other local and regional museum facilities as we develop our procedural approach. Taking those factors into consideration, the foundation of this project and thus the committee is primed for success. Therefore, it's staff's, it was staff's intention to bring this item before the council prior to contacting other stakeholders and committee participants to synchronize our approach by establishing the city representative team. The appointment of a council member to this Ad Hoc Museum Governance Committee is intended to follow the same form and fashion as we would with council representation on any other regional committee, agency, or board. So with that, myself and the deputy city manager are here to answer any questions and receive your selection and appointment. Thank you.
Councilperson Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor Rollins, and thank you, Ms. Hanley, for your presentation. I submitted some questions earlier today about the commitment from whoever is appointed to this committee. You talked about the charrette that was going to be conducted, but wouldn't this individual have a long-term commitment to seeing the project all the way through when this governance body have more responsibilities just beyond this one-day event?
At this point in time, what is the scope of what's before you is particularly defining the partition, the participation at the development of the mission and this, and the direction of the museum going forward. But absolutely, I think involvement from the volunteer that will be identified through this process, as well as the members participating in it, we're going to be leaning heavily on them. This is quite an undertaking, and I think the, one of the outcomes from this charrette will be identifying how we proceed. But as far as tonight's item and, and what is before us, the scope at this point in time is just pertaining to the involvement of the Ad Hoc Committee for a single day.
I see. Okay. Well, thank you. What I would, I don't know if I have another opportunity to talk before we get further into the discussion, but I, I just wanted to suggest that we appoint Councilmember Misty Perez to this committee, this governance committee. She's got the expertise in working well with groups, other people. She can decipher issues very well. She's got a well-rounded approach to her decision-making and problem-solving. And I think I can trust her to represent the wishes of the council. So I'd like to nominate her. Thank you.
Councilperson Gama.
Think we have a public comment. I see Galen Vick online. Galen, if your intention is.
Okay, Stephen. Stephen, right now we're in council comments, then we move into public comments.
Are we? Okay, I thought we did. I thought we did comments first, but okay. Well, Mayor Rollins and myself have logged probably hundreds, if not thousands, of hours of volunteer time at the museum. We both have been, we, we're the only two official registered volunteers with the museum, and I think it would be most appropriate for either myself or Mayor Rollins or both of us to be appointed to this. I have a vested interest in the garden out front. In fact, we spend time there most weeks pulling weeds and growing the flowers. And we, I've cut the grass a lot and spent a lot of time inside previously. So over the last seven years, I've, I've had a lot of time invested there, as does Mr. Rollins. So I think that qualifies us for consideration as well. I'm super excited to, to focus on what makes museums rock. And a mission statement is definitely probably the first order of business, and I'm just glad the way, way this is coming together. That's all I have to say right now.
Councilperson Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor Rollins. I, I want to say that I, I do think that Misty would, would do great. However, I want to mention that every time I, I, I walk past the museum a lot of times, and more likely than not, if I see anybody there, it's either yourself or City Councilmember Gama. I know both of you guys are really interested in if, if there's ever any talking about the museum, it, it comes from both of you guys. I, I mean, I'd like to nominate both of you, or I don't know who wants it more, but I'm, I'm willing to go whatever the council wants, because, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know if Misty Perez, if she wants it or not, you know. I mean, I just kind of want to get a feel for everybody, just so you know. I think this would probably be more appropriate for, I mean, either Mayor Rollins or City Councilmember Gama, or e- even Misty Perez, if she's interested. I don't, I don't know. I'd, I'd like to hear from her too. But I know that City Councilmember Gama, you know, talks a lot about the museum, and so does Mayor Rollins.
I'm not one for self-promoting, but I do want to express to the council my thoughts. I've taken active role in the promotion and the development of the museum since I've been here. I've seen it transition through three different types of leadership. I've put in personal time providing tours to youth group, the development of the Butterfly Garden, encouraging groups to hold classes, and actually motivating different people to come so that not only could they use this as a facility, provide their classes, but also provide exposure to the garden, I mean, to the museum. Previously, to my involvement within the museum, I was a docent for a year for the Los Olivas Adobe, providing tours and promoting that through the city of Ventura. Finally, I've, I've served on the Port Waenimi Historical Society Board for a number of years, also the Friends of Bard Board for a number of years. As we move into the future, I think it's essential that we have a combination of both new and experienced people to foster the future, future direction and management of the museum, so that it will be both distinctive to other museums in the area and also encourage tourism and a deeper appreciation of our residents to the history of our community. And so I'm very much interested in this particular position. And I will also attribute that for a number of years. Councilperson Gama has done a lot of sweat equity to help provide a lot of these different types of things. So we have a vested interest that way. And then just a little comment. I'm hoping that the staff reaches out to a lot of the different people who have had a vested interest in making this museum successful for a number of years and ask what their input and what their involvement might want to be. And I also am encouraged by that we have some new people that have some experience from other areas that can provide input to make this an even better museum. Councilperson Perez.
So yes, so anytime I'm nominated and accepting a position at a committee or a board, I always give 100%, regardless of that. I go above and beyond. And I don't think the fact that I don't volunteer necessarily precludes me. I think Ms. Hernandez was speaking on other attributes, but I do, Ms. Hanley brought up an important fact that if this is a long-term goal that somebody needs to dedicate to, what does that mean? How far does that extend past the year? And what happens come November? If, I mean, one of you doesn't get nominated, what happens if you're on the board and you don't get reelected? If it goes past that, what happens? What do we do then? We have to go through this process all over again.
Well, that's not such a bad thing.
Well, I mean, are they wanting to? I mean, I'm not the one that's asking for this committee to be created. So I don't know if that was given any thought, and how long is the long-term goal that is necessary to participate in it?
Well, both Mayor Rollins and myself have been volunteering before we were elected, and I imagine we'd continue afterwards as well. So with that, I would like to nominate Mayor Rollins.
I think that was a question from Ms. Hanley there by Councilwoman Perez.
Ms. Hanley, do you have a response to the question?
I think I'll have to defer to the fact that at this point in time, the staff report before you is specific to participation in the single-day charrette. If other terms are defined during that meeting and as a part of that Ad Hoc Committee's experience, then I would be coming back to the council.
Okay.
For either an extension or a continuation of that appointment.
I do have another comment. Thank you, Ms. Hanley.
Councilperson Hernandez.
Thank you. Well, I, I do recognize and appreciate all the volunteer work that Mayor Rollins and Councilmember Gama have devoted to the museum. You know, it's, it's wonderful to see you guys out there building the, the Monarch Garden and pulling weeds and getting involved at the programmatic level. But I think it's time now to turn, to include other council members in this, in this project. It's, it's time to put somebody else in a position where they can make not only contributions on behalf of the council, but help decide the mission of the mission. This is beyond just program volunteering and maintaining the art of the museum. This is more of a policy-level direction and, and guidance kind of position that is needed here. And I think it's just, it's time to put somebody new in there, who's, and give them a chance to, to represent the city council in this very important endeavor. So I would like to formally nominate Councilwoman Perez.
Okay. And I would like to formally nominate Councilperson Gama.
I would like to.
Excuse me. I needed, you didn't give me, give a time for a second on that one?
I, I, I'm sorry, I did. But, but.
To Mayor and Council, before we get into determining a motion and a second, if you go ahead and hear public comments, they do have one written comment. And I'm not sure. I also received one from David. I don't know if he wants to see you or if he wants to sit through this comment.
Okay. I, I think that's a good point at this time. Let's have some public comment. I see Mr. Galen Vick. I'm assuming you'd like to make some comments at this particular point in time.
Thank you, Council. I would just like to say that when I heard about us not having really a strong town historical committee or that the museum was not functioning, I, I wondered why. I've been in our community now. I've lived here for all of four weeks, okay? But I went by the place and, and saw the museum and just wondered what was happening. But I reached out to some of my family around the United States, Virginia Beach, Virginia, Red, Red River Museum in Oklahoma, and then one of my relatives in Florida, who each are curators for museums there. And I asked them to sort of give me some insights on guidelines. And they said, well, typically, historical societies are the ones that sort of drive the museum. And there has to be a layer of, of the historical part in order to make a museum thrive. And so that's something that you might consider in your decision-making. Typically, the historical departments are made up of volunteers in each of those three communities that I mentioned to you. And they have enough layers in them that they're able to overcome slowdowns and volunteers and such along the way. So with all the, oh, I, I mentioned, I, I wrote down five historical points in our town that's of value. And in order to increase the bandwidth of the charter, you need to keep it very narrow. That's something I observed from all the other museums is they have to keep very focused. I had a chance to look inside the museum the other day, and there was stuff in there from. Uh, I had a chance to look inside the museum the other day, and there was stuff in there from crosscut saws. I I don't know what the historical part of that was, to some displays, salt, salt shakers and such. I think you need to have a real focus, so this meeting that's going to be held on the twentieth. Would be a very important time for people to start strategizing on the very narrow uh, objective. Of something like that, but I'm here in the town, I'm invested, I I bought a home here with. My wife and I live in Surfside Four, we're going to be here till we die, okay? And so I'm here to volunteer and help anybody that is going to supervise this in the future, thanks a lot.
Uh, Councilperson Perez.
Yes, so while I appreciate um, Ms. Hernandez, I. I believe we're at a stalemate, and I am not interested in getting into a. Shooting match with anyone, so while I appreciate her nomination, I will defer to. The other nominations. And recuse myself.
Councilperson Hernandez.
Thank you, um, Councilmember Perez, that's very big of you, um, one thing I would uh, not support, and that is Councilmember Gama being on this committee. Um, based on past behaviors he's had in association with the museum, um, but I would support um. Uh, Mayor Rollins, um, as long as he can promise us that he's going to be communicating back and forth with us on what's going on. And uh, represent the will of the council and not the will of certain individuals. Thank you.
I love uh, I love the way you bring out personal attacks, I think it's inappropriate, unnecessary, and um. I would like to nominate Mayor Rollins, I think um. I really would like myself to be included too, but I think uh. I didn't know Mayor Rollins was a docent, I think that's awesome, and so I'd like to nominate him, and I think he's going to do a great job, and I would encourage everybody to volunteer at the museum. Anyone willing to help is always welcome there, and that's what I've done, and um. So with that, I'll nominate Mayor Rollins for this.
I think our city clerk has a, her hand up.
I I don't mean to interrupt again, but we did have one additional written comment. So if I can go ahead and read that really quickly. Um, it says, to the city clerk and members of the city council, I am unable to attend the meeting tonight, but wish to have my comments read by the clerk. As a volunteer who is still working for the museum, keeping the face of change active and answering historical questions. Just recently, I was asked to verify the start date of the Huaynimi School District for Christine Walker. I have already informed Anna Henry of my desire to serve on the ad hoc committee. My experience goes back to twenty twelve, when I was asked to research and write ninety percent of the storyboards hanging on the museum walls. Organized and publicized by two Saturday speaker series, and along with other volunteers. Including Rich Rollins, Becky Green, and Dr. Perna Pie, conduct the educational outreach program to local schools. I also still regularly publish a popular column for the child counting extension called The Story, History by the Minus. Which deals exclusively of the city's history. I offer this background so that you can understand why the selection of the city council liaison is so important to me and to the future of the museum. You may not be aware that for more than a decade, the museum serves as a cultural media place for the community. Under Larry Downey's leadership, and that loss has been decreased out during the time of COVID. As to the city council liaison, I believe that not only should this person actually know the history of the city. But should also possess the passion for teaching the path to others. This person cannot be allowed to use this position for petty or vindictive politics. This person should be a collaborative leader who can bring together diverse ideas and opinions. I believe that Mayor Rich Rollins would be the best council member for this job, signed, Dr. Beverly Kelly. And that is the public comment.
I, I see uh, Perna Pie, I don't, Perna Pie, are you um, would you like to speak or not?
Hey, thank you, Rich, thank you, Council, yes, I'd like to speak a couple of sentences. I've been a volunteer at the museum as for about seven years. And I have seen that place change from being almost like a storage garage to the current condition. And there are, I I do agree, there are objects there that don't belong there. But that doesn't mean that museum doesn't or didn't have any focus, it did have focus. And I do remember Rich and Steve Gama volunteering number of hours. To make that place better and welcome people. And also Dr. Beverly Kelly spent a lot of time there, putting all the storyboards along with myself. So I do think that among the council members currently who have most knowledge about that place. Is Rich Rollins and Steve Gama, and I'd like to support Rich Rollins's nomination. Thank you.
So again, I'll make a nomination to nominate Rich Rollins to serve in the museum. Board.
Well, I guess I'll second that, I thought we had a motion already. Are you there, Rich, Mayor?
It's not, no, I I I'm listening, um, so we have a motion and a second to appoint um. Mayor Rich Rollins to serve on the museum committee, may we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Gama?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Martinez?
Yes.
And Mayor Rollins.
Absolutely, yes, and I will be honored to represent you, and I will make sure that. For those of you who know me, that I'm even minded, and I will not make this any form of a political venture. And my, my best um. My best thoughts and interest are for the museum, that it becomes a successful museum that will bring. Uh, people both within our community and outside of our community to be proud of the city. So thank you for giving me this opportunity. So, uh, we will now move on to. Number fourteen, the comprehensive annual financial report presentation by our. Um, uh, well, it says our deputy finance director, Mrs. Sero.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council and staff. It is my pleasure uh, to present to you the city's annual comprehensive financial report. For the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Um, the city's financials were audited by the Poon Group, an independent accounting firm. And um, with that, I would like to present to you um, Ken Poon, who is going to go over the highlights of our audited financials. Ken is the managing partner and founder of the Poon Group, and he actually is the, um, he also is the um. Audit partner on our engagement, so we're um, lucky to have him um, with us tonight, and with that, Ken, I'll pass it on to you.
Thank you, Lupe, and um, let me share my screen real quick and to go over the highlight here. Uh, first of all, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to serve the city of Port Huaynimi here. So what I'm going through tonight is a presentation to the city council on the annual comprehensive report. That we audited uh, for the fiscal year end, June thirty, twenty twenty one. So what I'm gonna do tonight is actually going through the scope of work. Um, as required by the professional standard AUC sections two sixty, two sixty. Communications with those charge of governance, I'm required to communicate to you a list of things that is very important to this audit. On top of that, I'll go over the audit responsible, uh, audit responsibility, uh, under the professional standard. Uh, we'll go over the highlight of your financial statement. Uh, also, I would like to show you some financial indicator and key uh, pension and OPEP information that you you may need to know. And last but not least is to deliver our audit results to you. So the scope of work. The city engaged us to perform the audit on the annual comprehensive financial report. Um, the, since the city also expend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal expenditure. The financial statement is required to perform under the government auditing standard, that's required us to issue a report on internal control. Over financial reporting and on compliance in accordance with government auditing standard. And last but not least is to communicate with those charge of covenants, which we determine. Uh, the city council is those charge of governance under the professional standard. So under the AUC sections two sixty, which is the SAS one fourteen, uh, communications with those charge of governance. Uh, we are required to communicate this list of uh, information to you. Very importantly, independence, we compile with all relevant requirements regarding independence. One of the things is very important that uh, you you need to understand, this financial statement is the responsibility of the uh, of the city. Uh, we were also engaged to to assist the city in preparing the financial statement. Under the government auditing standard, the preparation of the financial statement is a non-audit services. We base on the information that uh, we obtained from the city, based on the audited trial balance that we obtained from, uh, that we audited. And then also, we uh, we actually do provide safeguard and making sure that we do not have the self review process. And management participation in in um, in preparing these financial statements. I'm happy to deliver it, uh, to to uh, say that we are, we comply with all ethical standard. In terms of independence rule in accordance with the professional standard. Significant accounting policy is very important, the city adopt a list of sound accounting policy and uh, incorporate into this financial statement. Um, and it's very important that the city also disclose these information in these financial statements, and you can find it in note one to the financial statement. Um, there are also accounting estimate that is being used in this financial statement, uh, some of the estimate, including the fair value of the uh, on on the investment. Uh, the depreciation of the um, of the capital asset, very importantly, both net pension. Uh, net pension liability and net auto post employment uh, benefit liability is a, is significant to these financial statements. So the actuarial calculation, all the assumption being made are also reflected in the notes to a financial statement, so it's very important that you go through the notes. To go uh, to make sure that you understand the um, how we uh, the liability is being evaluated and recorded on your face, on the face of a financial statement. Sensitivity disclosure and uh, uh, overall, as the auditor, we would like to point it out, the list of disclosure that is very important to you. So that's why we we listed out here, including note one, is a summary of the uh, significant accounting policy that uh, the city adopted. Uh, as I said earlier, uh, pension and OPEP, other post employment benefit, it's a, uh, it's, it's um. It's a estimate on these financial statements, so you do actually see a lot of information regarding the pension plan. And other post employment benefit plan uh, included in these financial statement. Um, note eleven is relating to the classification of fund balance, GSP statement number fifty four actually break it down. The uh, um, the uh, fund balance, the governmental fund balance into five different category, and in note eleven, note eleven. Uh, you do actually see how the classification being, being allocated into the the five different category. Note thirteen is other required fund disclosure, uh, there are certain um, expenditure actually exceed appropriation. And then also there are certain um, fund balances uh, is in the deficit position, is required to point it out in note thirteen. That you do actually have a a disclosure relating to the um, relating to the um, deficit fund balance and the. Uh, uh, expenditure exceed the appropriation, and note fourteen is relating to a subsequent event. Anything that's happened after June thirty to the date that we issue the report, uh, is being disclosed in the uh, in note fourteen. Um, also, regarding uh, accounting misstatement, uh, we we are happy that uh, there is no uncorrected statement reported, so if there are anything that we we noted. Uh, we do actually have a couple of the uh, the audit adjustment that is being, uh, that's uh, presented to the uh, to the management. And all the accounting adjustment, all the uh, audit adjustment is being uh, corrected and report properly in your uh, financial statement. Once in a while, the city may actually seek outside consultant uh, for a second opinion regarding accounting treatment. And to the best of our knowledge, and there is really no such consultation um, regarding the um, um, the the city seeking a second opinion on the accounting treatment on. In any matters within the uh, annual comprehensive financial report. Um, we encountered no significant difficulties in dealing with management, your management team has been really, really cooperative. Um, and provide us uh, the information, and also we did not have any disagreement with management in terms of accounting treatment or audit procedures that we perform. So that concludes the uh, the present, like the communication with those charge of governance. Also would like to point out uh, our responsibility as your auditor, uh, under the uh, professional standard, since the city is engaging us to perform the audit. We are required to form and express our opinion on whether the financial statement are free, uh, uh, present fairly in all material respect in accordance with generally accepted accounting principle. The city is a state and local government, so the the governmental accounting standard board is the standard setting bodies for for state local government. So the city is actually abide by all the accounting principle that is issued by the uh, governmental accounting standard board. We are required to plan and perform the audit to obtain reasonable assurance, not absolute assurance, so uh, making sure that these financial statements are. Are free of material misstatement, so we we actually utilize materiality to select our our information and and perform our testing on it. We do actually consider internal control over financial reporting, and such consideration is only to determine uh, audit procedures that we. Uh, that we perform, but not to provide any assurance on the in uh, internal control, uh, uh, not providing a opinion on the internal control. However, if we identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiency in internal control. We are required to communicate with you, and that will present in like, in my later part of the um, the presentation. Just give you a thirty thousand foot uh, foot of the um, uh, financial statement. So the annual comprehensive financial report is a, it's comprehensive, so basically, uh, break it down into three. Of three different sections, the introductory sections, the financial sections, and the statistical sections. Uh, we are mainly focusing on the um, the financial sections because the financial section is actually what we audited. Uh, including um, the the first uh, document is the Independence Audit Report, which is spelling out our audit op, audit opinion on each. Opinion unit that we we um, we conclude. Uh, the management discussion and analysis, which is a required supplementary information, even this, even this uh, document is an un-audited document. But this uh, document provides you a a thorough understanding on. Um, which, which is an analysis between what has happened between the years. So you will see the condensed financial statement between like two thousand, two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty one, and management actually do have a. A detailed analysis, a brief and like a detailed analysis talking about what has happened during uh, this year at the city. The basic financial statement, including a couple of things, one is the government wide financial statement, which is a consolidated financial statement for the. For the primary government, which is the city, the fund financial statement, you do have the uh, the uh, the governmental fund, you do have the proprietary fund. And then also the fiduciary fund, so uh, you do have like three different sections wa, on on each uh, fund type. And then the notes to the basic financial statement is key to this, is an integral part of the uh, financial statement. Basically, that will disclose the um, the the information that I already talked about, like the, the summary of significant accounting policy. And then also other detail for such as cash investment, long term debt, capital asset, pension information. Uh, subsequent event, all those information are included in the notes to the basic financial statement. The required supplementary information is actually required under GSP statement number thirty four, but as you know, get. Uh, are the required supplementary information, uh, we do actually have the budgetary comparison schedule for the general fund. But after the implementation of GSP sixty eight and GSP seventy five on pension, on pension and um, OPEP financial reporting accounting standard. There are also additional schedules that we need to present in the required supplementary information, so. Um, so we also do have the schedule of the proportionate share of the net pension liability. The schedule of the city's pension contribution, the schedule of change in net OPEP liability and related ratio. the schedule of the city's pension or contribution, the schedule of change in net O P A liability and related ratio. And then also, the schedule of city's O P A contribution is also required and added to the financial statement. The supplementary information, it's a list of all the non-major fund is all the combining non-major fund that is being presented in detail in the supplementary information. Also, last but not least, in the annual comprehensive financial report, you do see the statistical section. You will see a li- a a lot of schedule. I think it's about like fifteen to to eighteen different schedule kind of fall into the five different categories, like the financial trend, the revenue capacity, the debt capacity, demographic and economic information, and the operation information, which you can see what 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 are the trend in the last ten um fiscal year. So, it's very, very um detailed, and then you can trace it back to ten years ago. So, the next slide is talking about the statement of net position, which is the balance sheet as of June thirty twenty twenty one. Uh this, the first slide is on the government-wide financial statement, which is a consolidated financial statement. Even on the on the consolidated uh position, we break it down into the governmental activities and the business-type activities. At the end of June thirty twenty twenty one, the city ended with uh eighty-three point nine million dollars in total net position, of which thirty-seven point three million dollars is net investment in capital asset, fourteen point two million dollars is restraint, either restricted by third party or enabling legislation, and then remaining the unrestricted of about like thirty-two point four million dollars. So, which is uh which is great, because the city actually have a really, really strong position. Uh normally, when when um when the city is actually implementing G S B sixty eight and seventy five, which is the pension and and O P A accounting, uh normally, you will see the unrestricted into deficit position. But also, in 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 your sc- scenario, uh you do have a pos- a a strong positive uh unrestricted number showing uh even after the implementation of G S B sixty eight and seventy five. So, what what is the income statement? What 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 is from your operating result uh bring bring it to to a positive um um net position here? So, total expense for for the for the year forty forty-one point seven million dollars. Uh program revenue, under the G S B statement number thirty four, program revenues are those revenue that you can charge the user for a fee. Uh or either you can um subsidize by operating grants or a capital grant. So, for the fiscal year end, June thirty twenty twenty one, total program revenue was uh twenty-nine point four million dollars, resulting a net cost of service of about like twelve point three million dollars. The twelve point three million dollars is actually um uh supported by tax revenue. Uh so, as of uh for the year end, June thirty twenty twenty one, total tax revenue was about like sixteen point four million dollars. Uh you do have some other uh general revenue of about like three point seven million dollars. So, the net increase for the fiscal year was seven point eight million dollars. When you break it down between the governmental activities versus business-type activities, uh six point two for the governmental activities, and then one point six for the uh business-type activities, which is a pretty, pretty good results. General fund is the main operating fund for the city. So, basically, you can see uh there is a uh 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 almost like four point seven million dollars increase from prior year for the um for the fiscal year. So, total asset as of June thirty uh twenty twenty one, uh close to forty-two million dollars. Uh the current liability, two point three million dollars. You do have a uh un- unavailable revenue of about like five hundred and three thousand dollars. So, the net, the uh remaining fund balance, which is the equity of the general fund, is thirty-nine point two million dollars, of which twelve point eight million dollars is uh non-spendable. Uh why we call it non-spendable? Because you do actually have advanced to uh other funds and and the long-term loans receivable that you cannot see in the short term, like cannot convert it into a short-term cash. So, basically, it's caught like we, under G S B fifty four, is classified as non-spendable. You do have another restricted one point four million dollars, which is uh the city actually has set aside in your what uh one fifteen trust. Uh one point four million dollars uh was being set aside in the pension trust fund. And then also, um the remaining the unassigned um of twenty twenty-four point eight million dollars, which is a really, really strong unassigned fund balance based on your operations. The general fund oper- operating results, total revenue um of about like this year, you do have about like twenty-three point five million dollars in total revenue, uh net of expenditure of about like twenty million dollars. So, the revenue over expenditure is about like three point five million dollars. You do actually receive some uh the net transfer coming in uh back from uh coming back from the uh to the general fund of seven hundred and sixty-five thousand. So, that is your change in fund balance of four point, almost like four point two million dollars increase. So, some financial key indicator, and one of the things that I I I I I take a closer look at is your reserve fund level. As you can tell, we we are walking into a recession right now, so uh the 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 reserve level is really, really important to a general fund. And you have a really great ratio, because the total unassigned fund balance, which is the valuable fund balance that the city can use for the general fund, is close to twenty-five million dollars. And your total annual expenditure is only like twenty million, twenty million dollars. So, which comes up with the ratio of hundred and twenty-three uh percent. G F O A, the Government uh Financial Officers Association, do actually have a minimum requirement, best practice of two months of expenditure, which is equal to sixteen point six seven percent. Me being a a CPA, we always highly recommend our clients to have at least like twenty-five percent. But you do actually have a hundred twenty, close to a hundred twenty-four percent, which is a really, really strong position. As mentioned earlier, pension and O P A is a uh gigantic liability on the face of a financial statement. Um G S B actually, the governmental accounting standard board actually require the disclosure on the sensitivity level, which is basically looking at what if the discount rate changed by one percent? The discount rate being used by the actuarial study is basically looking at the uh long-term uh rate of uh rate on uh rate of return on your uh pension investment. Um so therefore, um the the city is actually a participant of Cow purse. Cow purse is using a seven point one five percent as your as the current rate. So, if the the if the uh the um the um discount rate dropped by one percent, your liability, your liability can goes up to fifty million dollars. Uh but in case that it increased by one percent, it will drop it to uh twenty-one point two million dollars. Current rate at seven point one five percent, uh the city is actually recording thirty-four million dollars on the face of your financial statement. So, the current um funding status of your your plan, under the miscellaneous miscellaneous plan is sixty-nine point eight percent, and then your safety plan is seventy-two point seven two percent. So, which is pretty uh pretty much on average compared to other city. And same thing for O P A, uh O P A liability, uh the current rate was six point three nine percent uh at the the liability report on the face of financial statement, three point six million dollars. But if the discount rate dropped by one percent, the liability can goes up to four point two million dollars and vice versa. If the discount rate increased by one percent, the liability can drop it down to three point one million dollars. So, the current uh funding status of your um of the um uh of your plan is about like forty-four percent. The other results, um we are, we are happy to deliver the unmodified opinion on all opinions unit, which states that the financial statement are fairly present in all material respect. Accounting policy have been consistently applied, the estimates used are reasonable, and the disclosure are properly reflected in these financial statement. And then also, regarding the internal controls matter, as I said earlier, if we identify any internal controls issue, uh that seem to be material weaknesses or significant deficiency, uh we are, we are required to disclose that to you. And in last year, we do actually have one material weaknesses and two significant deficiency. And I'm happy to say that uh the city actually do take corrective actions. And this year, we do not have any um um internal controls matters that we need to disclose to you. So, there's really none noted for the current fiscal year. So, that's conclude my presentation. I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Alrighty. Well, first of all, thank you for a very detailed and very complicated report, and you made it as clear for us laypeople as possible to understand it. So, thank you very much. Um at this point in time, I have counsel person Gamma who has some co- questions.
Thank you for making the complex understandable. Really appreciate it. Um um for the last uh three and a half years, I from the moment I got elected, I was really trying to focus on our unfunded liability with pension obligations. And I noticed that we're going in the wrong direction, even though sixty-nine and seventy-two is a good place to be. Um we are going in the wrong direction. And I wonder if you have the ability to do some reverse auditing to give us scenarios to get to an eighty or a ninety percent funding level. And I'm also interested to hear your opinion on the um interest rate increases and and that I think it has an inverse relationship to what we're trying to do as our unfunded liability. And then you made some news tonight. You used the R word, recession. And um are you of the opinion that recession is inevitable? And how will a recession um impact our um not only our our awesome financial status right now, which is great? I mean, anybody going into a recession clearly would want to have a hundred and twenty-three percent you know, funds available. Um so that really puts us in a really strong position headed into these uncertain times. But um with increasing interest rates, how is that gonna affect our unfunded liability? And to what extent do you think a recession could um pose risk for us in the future?
Well, the thing was, in terms of the unfunded liabilities, as I said earlier, this is um you are at like on average in terms of funding status. Um interest rate will definitely have an a big impact to the uh unfunded liabilities, because uh the increasing interest rate will slow uh will slow down the market. Uh the other things, what you may also look at is how like, what will be the perform like uh the performance on your investment portfolio um coming down the the road? As I said earlier, um the the recession is actually, we are, we are technically in recession, even though we have, we are not not able to 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 say it out loud until until um couple weeks later. But at the end of the day, like the the recession will actually will will impact your rate of returning on those investment, and then also will increase the amount of the uh unfunded actuarial um lot um uh actuarial liability on the pension. So, I'm not a a perfect person how to strategize the uh how to get back to uh the the eighty or ninety percent of of pension funding, because a lot of time like you may need to cons- uh consider uh uh so many different factor. You may need to work with Cow purse on like which unfunded liability that you may want to pay it down uh as early as possible. The other thing, what you you can also do, like I see that you do actually have a uh section one fifteen trust, the one point four million dollars that you set aside. That amount of money is actually being good for the city, because that money is not sitting in the same trust as what Cow purse does. And you do actually have some control over what investment that you have. Uh so, that's why that one point four million dollars that you have in the uh section one fifteen trust is not being uh is not part of the calculation of the of the um of the unfunded pension liable unfunded pension liability as part of the calculation. So, uh I highly recommend the city to work with a a um actuary uh actuary to determine how you can actually get back to the eighty or ninety percent um uh status. And that 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 is going to help the city in strategize and how to fund those um pension liabilities.
Uh counsel person Hernandez. Oh, your hand was raised. I'm sorry. Um okay. I guess uh my follow-up is si- since that we're in such great financial shape and there is the potential that like, you know, the economy may go into some a partial or a full recession um from yours, and maybe this is not your area. Your area may just be to report what the status. But do you have any advice to us where is it best to just keep very, very large reserves? Because I remember uh years back, uh the council voted to keep the reserve level at a per certain level, similar to what you were saying a lot of other cities were at. And I think we're quadruple that level if I'm to read what you said was right. So, we we have a, we have a gutload of reserves. Is uh is it best to keep those, or is it best to maybe invest it some way in the future if the recession does happen? Or maybe that's not your area, but.
Well, the thing was, this is something that uh you do have a really, really strong uh reserve right now. I think uh keeping keeping the reserve level at this point, walking into a recession, you will definitely feel more comfortable just in case something ha- happened and no revenues coming in, you can actually sustain for pretty much the whole like more than a year. So, normally, we don't see this kind of reserve in a in a city environment. But I think this is like in the future, you may also consider on reinvesting some of the uh the the money back to the uh capital projects, because a lot of the uh the other areas that I'm looking at is the deferred maintenance on infrastructure. In the past, uh there are a lot of uh street and roads are are basically being deteriorated and not being funded, um especially back in the uh oh eight, oh nine, uh at that time, when 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 times are tough, a lot of maintenance are being deferred, and I think there are still the case for a lot of cities. So, in the future, you may also work with your public works department and determine how like kind of going back and reinvesting in some of those um those um uh infrastructure, so that uh you don't have to come up with a gigantic um numbers in the future to really uh replacing the uh replacing the infrastructure.
So, uh I know our public works department has done a exemplary job of like keeping us ahead of like these infrastructure problems. Uh but you would probably recommend us as a council to continue to uh look towards infrastructure improvements as a way to possibly utilizes uh money while we have it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ken, I just want to point out on the unassigned fund balance, that twenty-four million. Um the city does have fiscal policies in place um for catastrophic emergencies, you know, compensated absences, risks. So, that is the amount. Um I talked about it a little bit on the staff report. It's approximately about fifteen, sixteen million dollars. Um and those calculations are always based on the estimated budget for the next fiscal year. So, we take that budget and we say, okay, um these are the amount of reserves that the city um is going to set aside based on fiscal policy. Um on the audit report, Ken, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're not including them as committed, because my understanding is we don't have a resolution. And so, they're just internal policies. Uh but those are the numbers that when I present financials, I always say, you know, we have fifteen million dollars we've got to set aside. Um and the reason you don't see them as committed, I've seen other cities' financials, and other cities have them as committed funds, uh because my understanding is they have a resolution, which we don't, which you know, obviously, we can always talk about looking at those numbers and what we're comfortable with, or what the city council is comfortable with.
Correct.
Okay. Any other um comments from the council do um? Do we have any um public comments regarding the um audit report?
There are no public comments.
Okay. Um so then, at this point in time, there's rec- the recommendation is to receive and file the city comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. And again, thank you, uh Mr. Pun, for an exemplary job of presenting it to us.
You're most welcome.
Okay, so may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
So, we have a motion to approve by uh counsel person Perez. Uh I I'm sorry, uh Councilman Hernandez, your your hands raised. Is that to second it or? Or do you have a comment? I can't hear you. You're you're um you're um.
I did. Thank you, mayor. I did want to thank Ms. Um Osato and Mr. Pun and um the finance staff for all their.
You're you're.
And bringing us, yes, I I know. I'm trying to get around on the screen. I just want to thank the staff and Mr. Pun and Mrs. Osato for their hard work on this and bringing us good news and a positive, clean audit report. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Okay. I know, I remember listening to council financial reports years back when it was much more dire for our community. So to all the staff who's kind of led us in the right direction, thank you.
And I did want to make that second as well.
Okay. And so we have a second, we have a first, we have a motion and a second to approve. Maybe we have a roll call vote.
Excuse me, are we, we're not approving. We're just receiving and file. Is that?
Yes, but I think it says that.
It's a receive and file.
We still have to, even though we receive and file, there have been given instructions that we do have a roll call vote to receive and file. And so I'm following orders of our city clerk.
Yeah, I understand, but the word approved was used, so I don't know that we're approving. But anyways, we're approving to receive and file, I guess?
We're approving the recommendation.
Okay, I'll vote yes. Just move it along.
Very good. Okay, so anyway, maybe we have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Perez.
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Yes.
Councilmember Gama.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Martinez.
Yes.
And Mayor Rollins.
Yes. We're now moving on to number fifteen of our agenda, and that's the economic development consultant contract renewal. And Mr. Connors, you will be providing us with the report.
Thank you, Mayor Honorable City Connor, Council. I will take you through a quick history of a contract that we enjoy with Mr. Kenny, who is a sole proprietor company called Caris Navigating. In January of two thousand seventeen, he became contracted to the city in support of general and in some cases, very specific economic development and business development efforts with a particular emphasis on the cannabis business. Since that time, he has expanded his role out of necessity, specifically with regard to COVID and the absence of a dedicated business association, business district, and a suspended chamber of commerce. Throughout COVID, he led and integrated a variety of different agency efforts to support local businesses, including setting up kiosks and a variety of other local support to help struggling businesses through the challenges of COVID and the absence of a certain revenue that they had enjoyed before. And the transition to a variety of different new methods of business that was not contemplated in the months before this pandemic event hit the city pretty hard. In this past year, we had the benefit of receiving American Recovery Act funds to five point two million dollars. Mr. Kenny also led that effort. And that effort included outreach to businesses, but also nonprofits to identify a series of twenty-seven projects, from capital projects to business support projects that was intending to relieve both the loss of revenue created by COVID but also put businesses on a path to have a little bit better preparation should an event like this occur in the future. Through that effort, five point two million dollars were released to a variety of different projects. With regard to business and nonprofits, Mr. Kenny facilitated distribution of funds, the agreements that were required by the Treasury. And he made sure that with respect to the businesses of grocery and pharmacies, that employees that were awarded payments from this fund received the payments that council had approved. He also took on a couple of other initiatives to include the city name change, the research that determined the cost of the event, the process that we had to undergo, and the methods by which this could potentially become a reality. And in the future, should on November, on our November ballot, if this becomes a reality, then he will also be assigned the modifications and transition to a new city name change in advance in support of our seventy-fifth anniversary. In addition to that, there's a couple of very specific business endeavors. One was to look at engaged businesses to determine the impact of plastic ordinance and also to facilitate a variety of different things that looked at the development of certain properties, including having to become a quasi-expert and in fact, an expert in many different areas of land use or successor agency, Assure Plus Land Act, and then converting those properties to potential sale and retirement of the successor agency in the future. So to put it mildly, has been indispensable and picking up a lot of the stuff that would have fallen on my shoulders or probably the city attorney's shoulders. And because of his expertise, experience, his network, his trust in the community, especially with business, he's been an asset. And this contract would extend the initial contract and would allow him to continue to serve for another year. On the average, his monthly billing is somewhere around three point three thousand dollars. And over years, almost forty thousand. A lot of that has been going to cannabis support, applications, entitlements, continued use permits. And this year, which was somewhat of a low year for cannabis activity, business activity, that amount was about eleven percent of his total fees. It was higher in years past. So with that, I present this contract for council approval. Penning your questions?
Yes, councilperson Perez.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Connors. Mr. Kenny, while I believe you've done a lot of good and that you have a lot of great qualities, there are two items I do want to request that you improve on. And we've talked about it a few times. And that's specific business outreach. I know that over COVID, there were several times where you sent out emails to engage businesses in grants and whatnot. And I had mentioned to you that many of our businesses never received any communication from you. And I don't know what the reason was, but nonetheless, I would like to see, because you are the economic development contract for our city and it's part of your job is to try to engage and bring up our businesses. I would like to see more personal communication and contact from you with our businesses and the owners and letting them know your face and who you are and how to get in touch with you because many of them share that they didn't receive anything from you. So that's one area I would like to see you improve on. And with the styrofoam presentation, I was slightly disappointed in that because you did not engage our businesses at all. In fact, the information that you obtained was outside sources. And the items that you presented that would potentially increase the cost for our businesses were completely unrelated to what our businesses even use. And the one item that they use on a regular basis wasn't even included in that presentation. So that would be my request with that you do a more personable engagement to our businesses. We're a small city and I go in there and I walk the city and they know who I am and I know who they are and I speak to them on a regular basis. And I would like to see that improve in the area of business outreach because of the fact that we are lacking a chamber of commerce and we need that personal touch. And we need to engage and try to bring in businesses and find out why we're not bringing in businesses. What are our shopping centers are doing? What do we need to improve in? You know, what things that we can do to reinvigorate small businesses in our community? And that's all I would say about that. Thank you.
I would like to make a few comments. On the plus side, I commend Mr. Kenny's versatility and being kind of the go-to person when we've come up with a variety of different issues, be it planned or not planned, with the pandemic, with the navigation of the cannabis, with the, you know, the federal funds and how we've distributed them. I guess one of the things that I would look as a goal for the future is we have a lot of, I would say, blighted shopping areas that I think need some kind of revitalization. I'm not an expert on that, but I'm hoping you are and that you are able to reach out to revitalize some of these areas and some of these vacant properties that we do something that will provide long-term benefit, not only to the community services and use, but also long-term benefit to our revenue sources. And so that would be, I guess, from my standpoint, the walking orders, which I'm sure you'll be able to accomplish or will give it your best effort and hopefully be successful. So good job up to this point, but it never ends as far as like, you know, where we need to move as a community. Councilperson Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor Rollins, and thank you, Mr. Connors, for presenting this report. And thank you, Mr. Kenny, for your service. This is an instrumental amount of work and I'm glad, Mr. Connors, that you captured all of this for us. I've never seen, I don't think last time we renewed Mr. Kenny's contract, that we had a really good summary and outline of the work he's accomplished that his consulting agency has accomplished. I do feel similar to Mayor Rollins in that we need to have established goals, smart goals, put forth under, for Mr. Kenny. So perhaps you can come back to counsel with that at a later date. I do want to see some work with the Chamber of Commerce. I had a conversation with Francine Castanon recently. I always said that to her and Tracy Sasan, we're going to bring the chamber back, but they were only going to do one event and then they were going to do the food trucks. And to me, we need so much more than that. So I hope that you can work with them and come up with a way that we really, that will really strengthen, help strengthen our business community and strengthen our Chamber of Commerce. So thank you again for all your contributions and your hard work.
Okay. With that in mind, we have a recommendation to approve the renewal of the contract for the economic development consulting services with Caris Navigating.
Mayor Rollins, if.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand raised. I'm sorry.
Is Steve Kenny present here today? I would like to hear from him if he is.
I, I don't, yeah, there he is in the flesh. Do you have any kind of response or to what you've heard at this particular point in time? Or Mayor Pro Tem Martinez, do you have a specific question?
Yeah, no, I mean. First, I wanted to know if he was here or not. You got cut off a little. I wanted to, I wanted to just, his experience has been here with the city and if he, what goals he has for the following year. And if also maybe ask him like, what were the top three accomplishments that he got done or that he's proud of over this past year?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Council. First, I appreciate hearing all the comments that you have to make and I take them to heart, both the compliments and the suggestions for other areas to spend more time in. I am at the pleasure of the council through the direction of the city manager and I will talk over all of these comments with him and work with him to sort of chart out the course of action for the coming year that I hope will meet your hopes and expectations. I think, looking back, Mayor Pro Tem, for the past year, I think I'm happiest with the work I was able to do sort of one-on-one with businesses in the COVID grant program. When the county stepped up to offer direct grants to local businesses, we, number one, worked hard to put that information out to everyone but followed it up with offers for free one-on-one sort of handholding and direction through the whole application process. And I had, I think, a total of about three dozen businesses that came to take advantage of that. And they were all very happy to have the assistance from the city that I was able to provide. I also relish the research work that I was able to do to bring you all a comprehensive picture about the implications of a name change to the city. I know it's a live-wire issue, has a lot of implications for the future and a lot to be considered by the voters. I think that we've done a good job of making you aware of what those ramifications are and in so doing, are making the voters aware as well so that come November, they can make the informed choice that we expect them to make. So, but I found those are two highlights that I'd bring to you.
And any, any goals or things that you're looking forward to this following year?
Well, I, you know, I have some ideas, but it's tough because I'm not a lone cowboy out here just saying, you know, this is my idea, so this is what I'm going to do. I've got some ideas that I need to sit down with the city manager and go over and see which of them kind of fit into the bigger picture that he has responsibility of managing. So I don't, I don't want to get too far out, outside of or out ahead of out of the direction that I need to take from management.
Yeah. Along that vein, I've heard from a couple other councilmen is like, you know, perhaps at one point in time, after you've gotten an opportunity to talk to the city manager, you guys can kind of come back to kind of what you feel the goals should be in the future that we can kind of, you know, approve or whatever. I know that, I know like when we were doing that, the consulting and like the vision of where we're going and stuff like that, one of the themes came up as being able to take advantage of like the high-tech industry and as we look at ourselves as a community. And while that's a very great goal, how to accomplish it, obviously, is the bigger challenge. And so, I mean, that's one of the things that have been on my mind at least. So councilperson Gama.
Thank you, Mayor Rollins. Thank you, Mr. Kenny. You've done a lot of work over the last seven years. It's much appreciated. Your work with the cannabis dispensaries was great. At this point, though, I think you've heard from the council and I don't know if the city manager has to repeat what we've said, but focusing on Mary's Market and that blithe, I mean, and we, you know, our city attorney kind of felt like he was telling us, it's private property. You can't push for better. And that area is just such a drag on our city. And I know it's privately owned, but what business plan calls for a vacant building for seven years with no revenue coming in? How is that good for our city? And I'm frustrated. I'm really frustrated that we can't seem to generate push or enthusiasm for change and better of that facility. And so my advice to you is, or my, I don't know, what can we do? We have to figure out how to get rid of blithe and improve our community. And that Mary's Market, Trade Winds Market, whatever you call it, it's just. it's just a hotspot for trouble on a daily basis. And I want to know what your plan is and to, to, to make the council's desires for better happen, in particular with that area. And I know it's a tough, tough question coming right out of nowhere, but when I think of your contract, I think of that place. I want that place. I honestly, I would love to see investors come in, bulldoze it and make it something great, you know, with all the amenities, public housing, you know, we have a housing shortage. We could have a mixed use. Ventura is doing a heck of a job throughout their city in doing these mixed-use, low-income housing on top and the businesses on the bottom. So I would just like to hear your thoughts on that.
Sure. Well, there's an element of frustration there that goes, that's shared by an awful lot of people. And I mean, I'm one because I come from the days of redevelopment when the city had more opportunity to intervene with properties that were clearly problems for the community. I mean, there were tools available to the city to, to force things to happen that are simply not any longer available to us. So with private property involved, the city has an opportunity to talk with the owners, to kind of share vision for the future, to offer cooperation, assistance, motivation. But it gets all more in the realm of jawboning than it is a carrot and stick approach because the stick really no longer exists. But I mean, I also will say that I've talked with, with the owner within the last month. I know Tony, Tony Stewart has as well. And the owner is, again, one more frustrated actor because he had at least two you know, very positive community businesses kind of lined up at one time or another to come in there. Both fell apart because simply those things happened in the business world. So he's been forced back to ground zero a couple of times, but he's now in pursuit of a third, which seems to be very near and would be a great asset to the community. We have to encourage him, but also just have, have some patience that he is going to be able to make this deal happen.
Okay. Do you have any other comments, Mr. Gama? I mean, Councilman Gama. Okay. Yeah, well, I, I think you, Steve, you get the general sentiment from everybody, and I'm sure you also appreciate that. So perhaps it's not going to be solved tonight, so perhaps in the future, once you meet with Mr. Connors, you guys can come up with a road plan for us. Councilperson Hernandez, your hand is raised.
Yes, I'm just ready to make a motion when you're ready.
Okay, I'm ready.
A motion to approve the contract.
Second.
Okay, may we take a roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
No.
Yes.
Mayor Rollins.
Yes. Okay.
All right. Thank you all.
We will now move on to number 16 on the agenda. Brown Act Government Code 54950, Serial Meetings and Unconditional Commitment to Cease and Desist Any Repeating, Any Serial Communication. Our city attorney, Mr. Spalding, it's your, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Rollins and honorable counsel. Regretfully, I have the privilege of bringing this agenda item before you all. At the last city council meeting on June 6th, there was a rather public discussion about a memorandum that was circulated on or about June 3rd, 2022, originating from Councilmember Gama. And it was placed in the city council members' mailboxes for distribution among the legislative body. The purpose of this agenda item is to not, not discuss whether or not this is a Brown Act violation, but it's, it's an opportunity to re-educate the, the city council on what a Brown Act violation is, specifically what a serial meeting is. It's an opportunity to engage with members of the public. And unfortunately, the Brown Act is, is one of those laws that the public is not very well familiar with, and they do not understand the constraints by which an elected official must conduct him or herself. And it's also an opportunity for the city council to avoid any potential liability civilly as a result of any of the June 3rd correspondence that may come down the pipe. So the California Open Meetings Act, otherwise known as the Brown Act, is found within California Government Code Section 54950 et cetera. Government Code Section 54952.2 specifically prohibits the quorum of the members of any legislative body from engaging in, and I quote, "a series of communications of any kind, directly or indirectly or through intermediaries, to discuss, deliberate, or take action on any item of business that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body." The exception for that statement is when said discussion takes place at a properly noticed and duly convened public meeting. What this means is that three members of the city council may not share their thoughts, positions, or opinions with respect to an item of business that falls within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council outside of a properly noticed meeting. The purpose of the Brown Act, the reason for its existence was back in the 1950s, there was growing concern over public corruption and background deals being made. There was a feeling that the public government, local government specifically, was not transparent enough. And so the Brown Act was invoked and adopted by the state legislature as a means to curtail any background deals and ensure that the public is invited to any discussions that its elected representatives are having at the local level. The state follows a different law called the Bagley Keen Act. Specifically because the city council is elected as a body to serve the public and individual council members have no greater rights or privileges than any other resident of the city, the council needs to have discussions as a body in public view so that the public can be informed and communicate on matters of interest within the public electors. The city council, it's important to realize that the city council policy and procedures manual, moreover, has a mechanism that's pretty unique to our city. It's not present in many of the other cities of which I am aware, nor any of the cities that I have worked at. And that is that our city council members may vote at the end of a regularly scheduled meeting as to what items of business they would like to see placed on the next agenda. Therefore, therefore, a serial communication really has no need to occur. If the matter is important enough from one council member's perspective to share with another council member or the majority of the council, it's certainly important enough to request it be added to a public meeting without engaging in such discussion and potentially finding yourself afoul of the Brown Act. The reason for this meeting tonight is that Government Code Section 54960.2 allows the city council to unconditionally commit to refraining from any action violative of the Brown Act within 30 days of the alleged violation in order to avoid civil liability for any violation there. And so because of the public nature of the, of the discussion of the June 3rd memorandum at the last city council meeting and the likelihood that a reviewing court may determine that that correspondence was in fact a serial meeting or a communication from one council member to the other that gives his or her position with respect to an item of city business, I think it's important that the city council vote to refrain from sending any future correspondence that has the potential to reach a majority of the council and refrain from sending council memorandums to all members of the council in an effort to avoid any potential Brown Act violations as well as any unnecessary and needless civil litigation. And with that, I yield.
Okay. Does the council have any questions of staff at this time? It appears that councilperson Gama has a question.
Yes. So as you stated, the Brown Act is very tough. So I just have a couple scenarios I want to run by you because, for example, how do we share information? Is it possible to distribute information to all the council members? I am not very confident that when I share information with the city manager that it gets shared with other council members. I was trying, a, a resident asked me, when did you all decide to go back to Zoom meetings? And I said, well, there was a survey and they asked yes or no, and I said no, and that resident said, so you voted no. So on the one hand, we're, we, we, we made a policy decision to go back to Zoom meetings by a survey in which I was asked yes or no. And so a resident could say, well, that sounds like a vote to me, kind of felt like a vote. So in regards to distributing information, are you saying we, we can't? Can we share information that would be of interest? But what you're saying is, is you can't share your feeling about it. Because I think that's what brought this up, is that I sent a memo saying, you know, they're getting ready to, well, I can't remember exactly what it said word for word, but it was a memo where I was sharing information, but I was also sharing an opinion. So is that where the line gets potentially crossed?
The line gets potentially crossed based on, from my interpretation, I would say here, discuss or deliberate or take action, I would view deliberate as your communication of a position was meant to engage, was meant to cause the other council members to think on it and deliberate. And so that to me is where we have the potential to run afoul of it. With respect to your, your earlier statement about polling the council, Government Code Section 54952.2 subdivision B2 specifically allows for that scenario. And what it states is that paragraph one, which is the paragraph that I was referencing with respect to a majority not having communication, shall not be as construed as preventing an employee or official of a local agency from engaging in separate conversations or communications outside of a meeting authorized by this chapter with members of a legislative body in order to answer questions or provide information regarding a matter that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of a local agency if that person does not communicate to members of the legislative body the comments or position of any other member or members of the legislative body. The real issue is not so much in, in the, in the first scenario regarding AB 361 and whether to return to remote meetings. The city manager has the authority to set the first meeting outside of council's decision. And if you remember correctly, at that meeting, the council voted to ratify that decision. Importantly also is that the city manager, when polling council to see if there would be any objections, did not make it clear how other council members felt. And no council member at any time knew what any other council member voted or thought.
But wouldn't it have been cleaner and better to put it on the agenda, have a discussion, and then have a vote?
We would have gone to an open meeting in person to have a vote to go into remote meetings?
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if the consent, when we went to remote meetings two years ago, I remember the meeting. We were here in this chambers and we discussed it and we voted and we went to remote meetings. So that, 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 that was my question. Would it be, wouldn't it have been cleaner to have an agenda item, have a discussion, then have a vote, and then go back to Zoom meetings? So anyways, it's a little confusing again. And when a resident says to me, well, it sounds like you voted. Because, you know, again, the resident asked, why did you guys go back to Zoom meetings? And I'm like, really can't give you an answer, but you know, we, we were surveyed and I didn't want to, so I said no, but we did. And then one other thing I, I just want to mention is that it's not necessarily true that if we ask for an item to be on the agenda, that it's on the next agenda. That's not in our policy. It's, and you, and you said it was.
It might not be on the next agenda, but it will be an agendized item.
What? But you said it would be on the next agenda. So I just want to clear that up because that's not our policy. It, you know, oftentimes we wait weeks before it comes on an actual agenda. So just wanted to clear that up. So anyways, that's it.
Councilperson Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor Rollins. And I just wanted to address the Councilman Gama's confusion over the, the role, the polling of council members regarding Zoom meetings. That happened under a kind of an emergency situation where staff had come down with COVID. And there was no time to wait until, to conduct a meeting because we had staff that were out and, and sick. So I think in this case, the polling of staff was, was quite appropriate and, and within the authority of our city manager. I also wanted to remind the council, this, this was the second time that there was document left in our inboxes. The first time was August 11th. It was a Friday because I remember having the discussion about it with Councilman Gama when I went to go retrieve my inbox materials. So I just hope that through this discussion, we can come to an understanding of what's a violation, what's not a violation, doing replyals to, to text messages, emails, could also be construed as a violation. So, you know, it's very unfortunate that this situation has occurred. It looks, it's, it's bad for Councilman Gama. It's bad for the city council. It's bad for us all. And it's, I take no pleasure in, in doing this, but it's, we need to bring this to an end. So thank you. That's all I have.
Councilperson Perez.
I just wanted to make a comment on the poll. I mean, whether or not it was considered dirty or not clean enough or whether somebody didn't like it or not, it was completely appropriate and within the rights to do so. So there was nothing necessarily wrong about that poll. The only thing that was wrong about it was that somebody responded in the group chat, but otherwise the.
Everyone's done that at one point except you, Councilmember Perez. Okay, well, I, no comment.
I, except for that I wasn't going to draw, again, I wasn't going to draw attention to the fact that you did it. I'm not going to do that. I'm, I have no interest in making it a public spectacle that you specifically did something.
Okay.
One more question because I'm still a little unclear.
You're, you have a question to Mr. Spalding?
Yes. So now I understand we, we all get emails from Cal Cities, from different people all the time. And I understand that that's not a violation. That's sharing of information. So if I pick up a piece of information somewhere and share it with my council members without stating, like for example, hey, look, I came across this, thought you'd be interested. Is that a violation or potentially a violation? Because I thought we're not.
Arguably not. However, I would counsel against a single council member making a mass email to the remaining council members, something that does not contain your thoughts or opinions or position on a particular item like a League of Cities.
My question was if I come across information, let's say on water, stage two drought.
Okay.
It's written information. And if I share it with the council members without saying, hey, we should do this or something like that, is, that's okay, right?
Right. But typically, the way that most cities handle that in order to avoid even the appearance of a Brown Act violation is they, is the council member who wants that distributed forwards it to the city manager or the city cleric. And then that sterile version of that goes out to the rest of the council for information.
Okay. Kevin, on, on that issue, like say. Okay, um, Kevin, on, on that issue, like, say. I had some brainchild or I had some information that I thought. The community would like to be aware of, the council would like to be aware of. Uh, is that something that I can, I can, me personally, can I kind of uh? Not only ask, but request that this gets distributed?
Yeah, I think it's also important to know that, that council does have council comments at the end of the meeting. If you were in possession of information that you think would be of the general benefit to the public, that is an appropriate time to make that, that information known. To the extent that you believe that council conversation or council discussion is appropriate with respect to that without, with any potential action. Then I would recommend making an agenda item request at the end of the meeting.
Okay, and I may be o- opening up a whole bag of worms here, but like, uh, one of the indirect ways of having a um. A meeting or letting other council people or the general public know how you feel is through all the social media. If I go out and say, I feel this uh about this subject. Or I promote this about this subject, or somehow I let my. Uh, intentions be a positively or negatively put through the city, you know, through the social media, in essence.
Right.
That becomes not only a serial meeting, not only it's an open meeting to the community, but in- indirectly, I guess. The city council knows how I feel about something.
The, the Brown Act, the Brown Act was recently amended and A D, I believe, nine nine two came out and council received an update memo. Respect to that, any post written by or, or reposted or anything by a, a city council member. Not even a single city council member may interact with that post, you may not like it, you may not comment on it, you may not retweet it, you may not use. A thumbs up emoji, you may not have any interaction with that or it is a Brown Act violation.
So that will draw a fine line, I know, I, I'm on a number of council persons uh Facebook and. A lot of times, well, I mean, I try to make it on things that are just totally non-council related, like, hey, nice idea, or, or, or not so much nice idea, but. Congratulations or whatever, uh, I, um, so I guess it would just strictly be on anything that would might be construed as. City business whatsoever that we shouldn't be making any kind of comments. But like, example, sometimes council people. With good intentions say, hey, you know, this is coming up here, or, you know, this is a program that's coming up and like, you know, it's. Yeah, I mean, they're doing it mainly to kind of let everybody know that there's something coming up. But, uh, I mean, I'd hate to prevent that kind of communication, I actually enjoy it and it's being sent out to the entire. Community, so it's not being hidden by any means.
That communication, that communication by a council member is fine, so long as not another council member likes or posts. So, so you just can't interact with each other on social media on items relating to city, within the city's subject matter jurisdiction.
So, so I, 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 so I'm just gonna one follow up and then I'll give other people. Uh, so then like, for example, say somebody um posts something, I don't, there's this event going on. And so I guess I'm not a real expert on social media, but I've learned you can take that and then put it onto yours. To let other people know and stuff like that, I mean, is that bad? I don't know.
It, I think it depends on the context and I think it depends on the method in which it's reposted. If you, if you were to repost, let's say an event was on Eventbrite or something and you went to the Eventbrite page and copied the link. Then I don't think there's an issue, but if you, you know, with it, I, I, I don't do social media all that much, so I'm kind of the wrong person asked, but if you were to like. If you were to reshare, uh, you know, councilmember Gama's Facebook post or retweet something, I, I don't know what you guys are on, so. If you were to, if you were to, I don't know, copy and paste his TikTok dance, I, I don't, well, that wouldn't be within the subject matter jurisdiction, but. You get my point, i- if it's traceable back to the original source, I would say that's sufficient interaction. But like I said, A D nine nine two is very new, it's less than a year old, so who knows what enforcement's gonna look like on it.
Okay, councilperson Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor Rollins, um, you know, I do recall when Mr. Spalding made us aware of the recent um. Amendment to the, to the Brown Act, and I also recall um every year we receive Brown Act. Uh, training on the Brown Act, not only through our city attorney, but through the California League of Cities. Um, there's plenty of information on the internet through the California League of Cities, um, there's. There's other information that you can, you can find on the Brown Act. I would encourage everybody to review it, to know it, if you want to sit in that chair as mayor one day for any of you. Or who've done it before and want to do it right, it's really important that you know. The Brown Act and that you know the Rosenberg Rules of Order and you know our council policies and procedures. It's all there in writing, it's all been presented to us. Um, we just have to pay attention and follow the rules so that we can ensure we have a smooth functioning council. So I think we need to move on, if we can, please.
Okay, well, then, uh, without, I, I'm sorry, councilperson Gama, you have a, a thought.
I did have a thought.
Followed by councilman Martinez now.
Yeah.
I mean, Mayor Protem Martinez.
Um. You know, I get lost in. So what, huh, I'm sorry, it slipped my mind, um, I'll read.
Well, let, let's move on to councilman Martinez, he hasn't had an opportunity to weigh in on this. Our mayor Protem Martinez, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Rollins, um, so Kevin, Mr. Kevin Spalding, um, city attorney, so. Just to reassure myself, I can make videos, I can do posts, I can tweet anything I want pretty much about like the city, my views, my ideas, my thoughts. Um, and there's no problem, just as long as no one else comments, likes, or replies, or shares.
That is correct. You don't, you don't forfeit your First Amendment rights just because you became elected.
Okay. Thank, thank you, uh, Mayor Protem Bobby, because you restarted my brain. Um, so let's just focus on the um car show for the police explorers. Now. Three of us attended that, and I think three of us put social media posts out on the success of the event. Raising twenty one thousand dollars for police explorers. Is that even close to a violation? Um, you know, if I reshare. A post from another councilperson regarding one of our successful events. Is that getting up against the line?
Mm-hmm.
Once again, once again, it depends on, it depends on the method on, on which it's reposted. Um, if it's like a retweet and says, you know, uh, councilmember Gama, Stephen Gama retweeted Rich Rollins' story. Then yeah, I would call that an interaction and, and A D nine nine two really speaks about interaction between the elected officials on social media. Um, if it's, if each of the statements, if all five of you. Uh, said the police car show was a wonderful event and did this and that, and even stated the same facts, as long as they're all independently sourced, I don't. And you don't interact with each other, I don't think that's a violation.
Okay, so just to be clear, it's, it's the interaction then.
It's, yeah, my reading.
If all three of us put an independent post.
We're good.
None of us like, respond, make a comment, then it's safe.
Then it should be safe under A D nine nine two and the Brown Act amendments.
Okay, I think we've got our guidelines and our marching orders here. So, uh, with that in mind, unless there's any further comments. Um. The comment, uh, the recommendation is to receive information relating to serial meetings. Uh, uh, mi- meanings of the Brown Act and approved by majority vote and to unconditionally commit. To cease any further violations of the Brown Act. Including any serial communications distributed to a quorum of the council through any means pursuant. To government code section five four nine six oh point two, may I have a motion?
I'm moved.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and second, Madam Clerk, will you please take a roll call vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Donald?
Yes.
Your first time, Martinez?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, at this time, we will hear comments and reports from our city manager. Mr. Connors.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Honorable City Council, if I could. Uh, Lupe, if you would just turn your camera on real quick for me, I want to make a quick announcement. Um, I want to be uh the first to announce in a form council that a selection for our finance director has been made, uh, Ms. Lupe Asero. Has uh received and accepted an offer to be our finance director and it uh has been administratively effective. Uh, I think two days ago, so um, I'd like to congratulate Lupe and I wanted to share that news with council.
Congratulate.
Thank you, Rick, and looking forward to continuing to work with each and one of you, so thank you, I'm delighted.
I've been very impressed so far.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Lupe, you go back to the, the dark side. I, I just got a couple of quick updates, um. Uh, our banner program continues going into the fourth of July, those will be set up um probably about next Wednesday. But we've also made a surge purchase of multiple flags and um. There'll be volunteers, it'll be strategically locating those flags. And uh salute and support of our, our national holiday on the fourth of July. I also wanted to remind the public and council that um this will be the second year of our um. Hero to Heroes Heritage and History Policy, which includes annual selection of Wainimi hero. Um, last year at the Beach Festival, it was the Friends of Ormond Beach. And we are soliciting and looking for nominations for this year as well. We'll put the information out on, on social media and encourage nominations, it'll also be up on Go Wainimi so that you can make. Uh, the nomination via that platform, but I just wanted to, to get the, the. The brain activity flowing in our council and the public, start thinking of, of uh who they um think warrant uh recognition. And award of that uh Wainimi hero to be presented at our beach festival. Um, we talked about the teen committee, which is the setup to uh the teen center. Um, which if we do this right and we engage the youth and we facilitate that effort. We can have one of the greatest teen centers in the county, so um I'm looking forward to building that, creating that, putting it together. And leveraging um our, our youth in order to make it something that they want to be at, they want to invest in, they want to be part of. And the last thing I'll touch on, uh, and this was brought up when we were talking about Mr. Kenny's contract. Um, uh, council uh with staff went through a strategic planning process, we've updated that and uh identified priorities for strategic focus this year. That rolled into the development of task teams and we've identified a, a task with K P I's and SMART goals. A lot of those include economic development and we're making a selection this week for project management uh software. So not only can we manage um probably somewhere in the vicinity of a hundred tasks amongst those teams. Uh, to focus on those things, but also to demonstrate and track where we are on those tasks, so um. Uh, we've come a long way, a lot of those things are, are, are being worked on, um, although you're not familiar with the details of all of it. You're seeing the benefits of it, uh, you know, through the talent committee with the recognition ceremonies and the July fourth event and a lot of the, yeah, new. Hiring and mentoring practices and those type of things, our C I P that we approved, that was a, a product of a, that task team. And setting goals and objectives uh to deliver cap projects uh that were aligned to the council's wishes for strategic uh trajectory and destination, so um. Um, with that. Uh, project management software, we'll be able to give you like very specific and, and graphic uh details. On where all those, those task teams reside and how we're tracking, and with that, I turn it back over to council.
Okay, um, councilperson Hernandez, your hand was raised at one point, you didn't have any questions of uh Mr. Connors, did you? I know, I just saw your hand.
No, I just decided, uh, for the sake of time, I'll pass.
Okay, and then um I think I saw a hand up but down again from one of the other councilpersons, so no questions for. Council, uh, for city manager at this point, okay, great, um, well, thank you, my, thank you for keeping us informed. Um, we will now move to council members' reports and comments. Uh, and I'm gonna start with um councilperson, I mean, Mayor Protem Martinez.
So this past uh weekend, um, on Father's Day, I held a three-point contest. Um, I was a little worried because the last holiday, there wasn't that many um participants, but there was. Uh, fourteen people that participated in the three-point contest, which was really cool. Um, I encourage um you guys to show up to the events, it's, the basketball ones are every third Sunday of each month and I'm still um. Figuring out when I'm gonna do the next one, but it's most likely gonna be baseball and, and another soccer one. And then followed by a volleyball one, so just want to let you guys know that, um, I've been doing these uh pop-up events at our local. Parks and beach for our, our, our youth and anybody and anyone that, that wants to play, so that's um my update. Yeah.
Okay, uh, councilperson Perez.
Yes, first of all, I want to say uh big congratulations to Frank and Henry Monolongo for a job well done and to all the explorers. For a huge success in the car show, that was um. Over three, four hundred cars, they had to turn away several because they just ran out of space, I think there was over thousands of people that attended. And I think it was mentioned earlier, they made al- almost twenty two thousand dollars for the explorer program and our explorers are. They are such an organized, wonderful group of people that. I know I've seen my daughter's growth in, just by attending and being part of the explorer program and the, the development that she has um. Reached because of it and the, the confidence and everything that she's learned through it. So I, I just would say that anyone who has a child aged fourteen through twenty one, I highly recommend. You uh checking out the explorer program, I think the session has already started for this year, uh, but it, it happens every summer. And they're always looking for kids to volunteer. Um, it's a grueling process, I do know that for a fact, but I, it teaches you a lot about yourself. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is that I'm, I'm working on. And it's either going to be through the explorers, uh, depending on whether Frank and Henry have time to do so. Or reach, it has to be through um one of our nonprofits to setting up a food share pop-up, which are regular. Um, thing that happens weekly at a location uh for our community, probably, I'm looking at hopefully the rec center parking lot. Um, if we can work it out, but I'm just waiting to find out i- if Frank and Henry are interested in having the explorers do it. The more details to follow once all the details come through with that.
Okay, um, councilperson Gama.
Yes, um, I just wanted to call attention to Market Street. And uh Wainimi Road, the vacant lot that the city owns. Um, it's being used as a quasi dump and over the last several years, I've noticed that. The amount of dumping going on there is increasing more and more, there's. Concrete, asphalt, dirt, slurry, who knows what else, vegetation. And I, I know most of it's coming from the city, but you know, it just, it looks like it's turning into a, a dump. Um, and so I wonder if we could uh kind of figure out a better way to, to manage that, because if. The current trend keeps going, it's just gonna continue to increase, increase, and it's kind of unsightly at this point and it's getting to be. A little more unsightly and um I notice that oftentimes the gates are left open and, and I'm just concerned that um. Some persons may dump hazardous waste out there or something that contains. Oil or gas and then the city will be responsible for cleaning it up, so I'm hoping that uh we could take a look at that. Um, Wainimi Beach cleanup is doing well, um. We uh, we're, we have a steady flow of volunteers and it's, it's just really great to see the effort that we're doing, um. One of the things that came up is, is tar, we don't. Um, one of the things that came up is, is tar. We don't pick up tar. And there's a lot of it. And we're wondering if anyone's got an idea on how we could collect and remove the tar from the beach in a manner that may be productive in other ways? Please let us know. Um, part of the problem is if we pick up tar and we put it in the buckets, then the buckets get stuck and it's gnarly and it's nasty and we can't get it out. But maybe there's a way where we could relieve the beach from the many blobs of tar out there. So if anybody has an idea, that'd be great. Um, earlier in the week, I, um, was able to spend a couple hours with Michael Tripp and gave him a detailed tour of the integral parts of our dredging process. Um, took him out to the sand trap. Um, we walked it, we surveyed it. Um, spent a lot of time here in our city and our beach and, um, and, um, hopefully we're going to get together again because we ran out of time. But, uh, we're, we're trying to prepare ourselves for the, um, dredging cycle that's coming up. Um, also, I attended the HOA Coalition Meeting of Wainimi and, you know, us city councilpersons have a couple of things in common. Number one, we're all elected. Number two, we live in the city. And the third one is we all live with it in a HOA. And, um, for councilmember Hernandez and Mayor Rollins, um, they may recall that I, uh, early on in being on council, I brought up the issue of trees, coral trees and some of the damage that they're causing, um, HOAs and, um, you know, we, uh, it's been frustrating. Um, and so as a result of that, um, some of the HOAs, we got together and they're getting more HOA presidents and management companies together. And, and they're, I attended this meeting where, um, city manager Connors and Tony Stewart, um, attended. And, uh, I really hope that we could continue to make progress on understanding the difficulties that all the HOAs are going to face. And each one of us, to a degree, some more so than not, um, are, are going to see, um, their HOA fees go up because of, of these issues. And so we've documented it very well and, uh, and we're trying to move forward. So I hope that we could, uh, get in front of the council, a new and revised community input-generated new landscape policy. It's, it's way overdue and the time is now. Um, like, uh, earlier in the meeting, I did mention that at Beach Cleanup, uh, three different residents came up to me and were speaking about an accident that occurred the night before. Apparently a car was speeding down Surfside, lost control, totaled the car. And, um, the, the three residents said that we gotta do something about this. Um, and it's kind of reminded me of Volker. And I could hear this speeding cars just about every night. I could see the, um, the burnouts, the circular tire marks being left all over town. And, um, I'm just hoping that, um, we could have a conversation on how, how we're gonna, um, correct this and I got one more thing. I, I don't even know if I should mention it, but I feel like I feel compelled to mention it, so I'm gonna mention it. But this week during Beach Cleanup, what we do is we clean the parking lots first. And, uh, we found several condoms in the parking lot and, 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 uh, I just trying to, how could, if somebody feels comfortable enough to come to parking lot B and have sex, um, I don't know, there's something we could do. I, it just, it was just, it's just a little over the top. And, um, perhaps, you know, we could start thinking about, um, the speeding and other activities that are happening in and around the beach that don't necessarily align themselves to family engagement. And with that, I will stop.
Councilperson Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor Rollins. I'll just go ahead and report on my, uh, committee work. Uh, we had our Port Wainimi Water Agency meeting today. Um, I attended that and I'll be attending the eight o'clock, uh, AM, um, AWA Water Meeting tomorrow morning. Um, Southern California S and Advisory Committee, I actually ran into Javier at the Juneteenth Event, which I attended on Saturday at the City of Oxnard. And he has some new products and, uh, information that he wants to, um, share with the city. He, uh, indicated that several businesses have signed up, um, to the energy saving program with Edison. Um, so, Mr. Connors, I think you'll be hearing from Javier to be, he'll be asking, uh, probably to be put on the agenda, um, sometime in the, in near future. Uh, I also attended the Channel Cities Legislative Lunch Meeting. It's a really good meeting. If, I'm, I'm sure all of you get the emails. Um, it's for the, uh, Channel Cities, which are, uh, cities in Ventura County, Santa Barbara County and San Luis Obispo County. And the, uh, primary topic of discussion was, um, the state budget and the, um, surplus monies and what is, what they're going to do with monies, the plan to, uh, expenditures for those funds. Um, so it's a, it's a good, uh, program to listen to. You learn a lot about what's happening at the legislative level, which eventually trickles down to us at the city level. Um, and it's only an hour, so it's just during a lunch period, so they're, they're done in one hour. Um,
Is that a Zoom meeting or is that?
It's a Zoom. It's a remote meeting, yes. Mm-hmm. Yeah. Um, our VSRD meetings are continuing. Um, I do wanted to, um, remind everybody that the Sand Summit is happening this Thursday at ten AM. Um, August, I mean, June twenty-third at ten AM. It's a remote meeting. Uh, you can download the agenda from the Beacon website and get the link to the, um, meeting itself if you care to observe and listen in on what's going on, uh, what's going to be happening with our dredging program and our sand replenishment program. Should be a good program. I know Mayor Rollins is going to do the welcoming remarks. Um, Carmen Ramirez, Supervisor Ramirez was on the agenda to do welcoming, uh, comments. And Julia Brownlee, um, Congresswoman Julia Brownlee will also be there. So that'll happen at ten o'clock, starting at ten AM Thursday morning, the twenty-third. Um, let's see if I have anything else. Um, I think that's it. Hope everybody had a good Father's Day weekend. Thank you.
Okay. Um, some of this will be a repeat, but, um, I brought, uh, a number of people to the car show from friends of mine through, throughout, uh, LA County, and they had a great time. They thought it was well organized. Uh, it had a lot for the, whether you're a car enthusiast or just a kid, you were amazed by the different variety of things for, for, uh, them to do. Uh, I was very happy about the booths. Uh, I think what, for me, one of the highlights was the little fire truck where the kids could come and take a picture and ring the bell and stuff like that. And that's just a nice touch. Um, and again, well organized. Um, I went to the RDP twenty-one meeting. Um, one of the things that's probably not new, but like they emphasize is that how the Navy is getting together with various different businesses to solve problems that will benefit both the Navy but the community in general. And so they're trying to develop these partnerships. So that's a, a re, I, I mean, it's not a new concept, but they reemphasize that that's what their goals are. I, I too am going to wake up early in the morning to go to the, um, uh, Water Issues Meeting, uh, tomorrow morning. Um, and then I want to, uh, thank the county and, uh, Mr. O'Clair for providing us the newest updated LGBTQ, uh, plus, um, flag that we're, um, uh, we're going to be flying at our, uh, City Hall. That's about it. So now we will move on to request for future agenda items. Anybody have some requests? I do if not. That being, uh, okay, um, councilperson Hernandez.
Yes, I just wanted to, um, request our city manager to remember that, uh, we're waiting for the Continuum of Care Agreement to be placed on the agenda so we can get that signed and become members of that, um, that board of, or commission having to do with the homeless. That's all I have. Thank you.
Uh, I had one, um, thing that I would like to be on the future agenda. Uh, one of the, um, one of the provisos with Reach and the city, uh, contributing money towards Reach is that the city council developed, uh, four or five events. I'm not sure if it's four or five, but four or five events that they prioritize that, um, Reach, uh, Reach gets involved in as far as running. And so I would like to put that on the future agenda that we can have a discussion, um, with the council and prioritize to give direction to the executive director as to where, um, we want their efforts being spent. So that's my request. Um, uh, but first let's handle, I'll call Councilman Hernandez, that's already been approved. Am I correct?
What's that?
The, the item that you brought up.
Oh, yeah, but I had a different comment about your role on Reach, Mr. Mayor. I'm really confused because I understand that, um, Mayor Protem Martinez is the primary person on Reach and there is no alternate. So I don't understand your role on Reach. Does he continue to report on it?
Okay, I'm reporting on it. I, I probably shouldn't, I probably should allow, um, Mayor Protem to actually make that report. I am on.
Yeah, that would probably be a good idea.
I, I am on the board.
Oh, you are?
Yes, I am on the board, uh, as a, as an independent resident.
Oh, okay.
In, in fact, that was brought up at a council meeting at one point in time, so.
Okay, so I, the reason I'm confused is you continue to report on it and I see a reporting on it as a citizen, not as a council member.
Okay, no, but now I'm reporting it on a council member mainly because that was brought to us as a council that we would in fact be the ones to decide the future events that they get involved in. That was presented to the entire council. So as a council member, not a council, not as a representative of Reach, but as the city council member, I would like to have this being brought to, uh, brought to the council.
Okay. I just, I think, I think Mayor Protem should be doing the reporting in the future, maybe just to avoid confusion, but thank you.
Okay, so any, um, uh, Mayor Protem, um, well.
We need to vote on your.
Yeah, okay, so that, I, I, I would like that to be on a future agenda that we give direction to the executive director as to what, for, for events that we want them to be involved in. Other than the Wainimi event, that was brought to us as an, an entire council. And I'd like to be able to give them direction.
I'll second.
The council can feel free to take action on this if they wish, but I just did want to let everybody know that is, uh, part of staff's plan. Uh, we are working on, uh, pulling information together, uh, to present a report uh, that would allow council to, uh, direct, uh, Reach, uh, to execute and coordinate, uh, what is going on.
Okay, so we'll just, so we have, um, I guess, uh, I don't know, if it's going to be on the agenda at all, do we need to vote on it or should we vote? The, the, what I've heard is city staff is going to be doing that anyway. Great. This is like, is it's taking care of who presents it, whatever that it's taking care of. Great. Okay, uh, any other requests for future agenda items? Well then, uh, at the, it is now ten fifty PM and I'm going to officially adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, staff. Thank you and good night, everyone.
Night.